Hi, I'm Jennifer Cooney and I work for King County Stormwater Services. Let's talk about storm drains. They're also known as catch basins. Chances are, you walk, ride, or drive past storm drains every day. But have you ever stopped to wonder how they work? Or why they're important? Andrew, could you open this? Storm drains are one component of King County's stormwater system. In fact, King County is responsible for more than 25,000 storm drains. Essentially, they perform two functions. First...
Have a little patience with us. We're waiting for one council member trying to find parking. There's a lot going on next door, so parking's taken up. Alex, we good?
Let's go ahead and start our meeting. Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Can I have the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Present.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Here.
Mayor Millman?
Here.
Councilmember Wes Campbell?
Present.
Councilmember Art?
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor.
Say "here" real quick. Okay, all present and accounted for. Can we stand for the flag, please?
I would like to propose an amendment to the agenda. Moving item number nine, the study session, up to the top of the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, we'll move it up to the first business item.
And now I would like to move to accept the agenda as an amendment.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Motion for the... Oh, actually, we have special presentations. We have a special presentation today. I'd like to welcome King County Search and Rescue. Appreciate you being here, and Mr. McCann's going to lead this off.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, staff. My name's Carrie Lee Gannon. I'm the executive director for King County Search and Rescue Association. I came on last January 2024, the first paid staff for search and rescue in the history of Washington State, actually. So, we're test-driving this thing, and for now, it seems to be going really well. I am actually pleased to bring some of our volunteers with us. The remaining members of Search and Rescue are all volunteer, and you'll be able to hear from them shortly. We are celebrating 60 years of service to the community. It's a really big milestone for the Search and Rescue Association. History and background: We were founded in 1965. Three founding units got together and decided that the collaborative effort was a greater benefit to the community than doing things alone. And from there, we've actually increased to nine member units over the years. As you can see, 1948, Seattle Mountain Rescue, 4x4, Explorer Search and Rescue were the three founding units. From there, we've included the ski patrol team, King County search dogs, horses, trackers. And fast forward to 2025, we've now added drones and e-mountain bikes to the itinerary. So, we are definitely a force multiplier for you and the community and for your community members. Our member units... Oops, excuse me. We have 483 missions a year. When you look at the collective number of missions in Washington State, there's 900 to 1,000. 483 of those missions are in King County. Now, all members of SAR are emergency state workers. They're registered emergency state workers, which means that they can be called upon not only for search and rescue, but also for disaster response, things evacuations, wildfires, crime scene searches, evidence searches, that type of thing. Of the 483 missions, 85% of those missions involved two or more of the units. And if you go to the top of those blocks, there's only one SAR coordinator in the sheriff's office, which manages all of SAR for King County. And that's 615-plus volunteers. So, it's a pretty big program, and only one SAR coordinator. From January 2021 to December 2024, like I said, there were 483 missions. If you look here, they're heavily concentrated. About a third of them are in the Snow Valley area. That's the gateway community for outdoor recreation. It's a known mecca. It's... We all know why we live here and why we love to recreate here, and so does the rest of the world. So, heavily concentrated in areas. We have our top 10 sites. You can look at Middle Fork, Otter Falls, Little Si, Mount Si. Did anybody see all of the posts about mailbox this year? Mailbox, seven missions to mailbox in a short period of time. Over the Fourth of July weekend, I believe there were three to four missions to mailbox alone. But it's not just backcountry SAR. Woodinville-specific, we actually responded here. This was just for 2025. And these are actually dementia, Alzheimer walkaways, and crime scene evidence searches. So, their skilled and lost person behavior does not only apply for the backcountry. It is also highly relatable to urban SAR. They are a skill to be reckoned with when it comes to finding walkaways or lost youth. We don't do runaways, but we do do lost kids. We've had some kids that have left camps and that type of thing, and we've been called in to help find them. We're also written into emergency management plans. So, your emergency support function, search and rescue, is top and center in some of those functions as well. Oops. By the numbers, outdoor recreation accounts for 2.2% of our GDP. None of that comes back to search and rescue. We are 100% donor and grant-funded. Our operational expenses, nine units plus CASSAR-a-wide exceed $400,000 a year. And a majority of that actually comes from the SAR volunteers themselves. What we're working on today, we have four pillars: communications and messaging. So, coordinating efforts with partners like Washington Trails Association and all trails. We're trying to get the message out, preventative SAR is what saves lives. Sustainable funding and growth, to include that disaster preparedness posturing. We want people to know that our volunteers live throughout King County, and they are a resource for you, not only when someone goes missing, but also when things go wrong. Organizational development: We are really looking for permanent headquarters to call home for these nine member units. And then volunteer recruitment and retention, understanding and supporting the why. Why do they do SAR? What keeps them coming back, doing this thing that gets them out of bed in the middle of the night, makes them miss work, and then have to go back and make up work because they don't get sick time and they don't get time off? What's their why? We have been exploring different ways of messaging that is translatable across cultures, languages. We're really looking at next year, 2026, World Cup. How can we get that safety messaging across? And so, we're looking at the use of pictograms that are easily identifiable. The Ten Essentials is something that we've been pushing really hard. It does save lives, and it doesn't cost a lot of money. It's not a big hurdle for people to do that, to get the Ten Essentials into their backpack, so that they can come home safely. And in fact, one of our very, very talented volunteers, who is here with us tonight, is the one who designed this. Because not only do they do SAR, but they bring every other skill set to the table. And that would be Stephanie from Explorer Search and Rescue. So, Stephanie, if you wouldn't mind coming up? That's your cue.
Oh, you already have a timer. Perfect. So, my name is Stephanie Dewar, and I am a member of the King County Explorer Search and Rescue Program. We are a highly versatile group that acts as the county's primary ground search team. And we maintain a highly trained technical rescue team, a snow rescue team, as well as our own emergency medical technicians, and a youth development program. We currently have over 400 members. And last year in 2024, we had 128 missions that we responded to. So, I joined in 2019, and my first mission was actually out of county. So, we actually do respond to missions that are out of county as well. And my first mission was at Mount Rainier, and it was for an elderly woman who had gone for picking berries, picking mushrooms, and had gone missing overnight. So, that's very stressful. A lot of things could have gone wrong. So, I spent my first day on my first mission, walking all around the woods, you know, feeling like, okay, great, we're going to find her. This is going to be great. And kind of like, oh, no, this is actually not very good. We're like, we don't know where she is. She's very lost. And we're just, we decide to do our... You know, we're very trained in this, so we go and we do our grid search. We go through certain areas. And by the end of the day, it's starting to get dark, and we find her. And she's perfectly fine. She had done exactly what you're supposed to do. She sat down. She waited for help. And it was just such an important moment to me to have that, to say, if we hadn't been here, it wouldn't have been such a happy story. So, to have that opportunity to go out and help people is so important. We all have, or not everyone, but almost everyone has a day job. I'm a full-time librarian for King County. And so, it's just so important to have this way to give back to the community. And again, we've got these nine units that specialize in different things. So, I get to go out in the field and look for people on the ground. But we've also got an amazing team that handles vehicle rescue and rescuing people. Where are you? There you are. Okay. This is my cue to pass it off to my amazing colleague in... You know what? That's why I need to look at the slides first. My amazing colleague in our dog team, and then we'll get to vehicles. We're doing the best part next, because I know you guys all want to meet. Puzzle!
Good evening. My name's John Isant. I'm with the King County Search Dog Unit. There are three main types of search dogs. There are air-scented search dogs that go out looking for any human, awfully roaming out through the woods, sometimes hundreds of yards away from us. And then they come back and tell us when they found something. Trailing dogs, those are the ones you may think about where you take a hat or a glove, and you show it to the dog, and they follow people for miles. And they really do. And then we have dogs that specialize in human remains detection. And that's for everything from crime scene work to situations where someone's been lost for a very long time, and they no longer have the scent associated with a live person. So, you need a dog trained specially for that. Puzzle is about two years old. He's still in his training period. He's passed his preliminary tests, and he's going to be a specialist in crime scene and other sorts of human remains work. Many different breeds can be used for search dog work. We have mostly shepherds, things like German shepherds, Malinois, border collies and that sort of thing, and a lot of retrievers. We have Labrador Retrievers, Golden Retrievers, Flatcoated Retrievers, Nova Scotia Duck Tole Retrievers, if you know those. And in all these cases, we're using their intrinsic prey drive to try and get them to do their job. The big challenge for training for us, and the reason that it takes at least two to three years to certify a dog, at least 1,000 hours of training, is that dogs, who became domesticated about 40,000 years ago, have been doing this for a long time. Those of us who come into the unit have been doing it a very short time, so we're playing catch-up. So, it takes a long time to put together the teamwork that you need. And the teamwork is really critical. It's critical between the dog and the human. It's critical between different dog groups. It's critical between the dog groups and the 4x4 groups and the ground searchers. And we also work a lot with search dog units from other counties. So, we work all around the state on larger missions. Down, 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 down. How many of you have dogs? Okay. So, I'm just going to talk about dogs for a second, because they're wonderful. Their noses are amazing. They have about 500 times more factory tissue than we do. They have a brain that is devoting about 30% of it to smelling and analyzing complex molecular patterns. They actually have about 8% of their entire genome involved, in genes, involved with a factory sensory perception. I'm actually a retired molecular biologist. So, sometime when you have a spare three or four hours, I'll give you the full lecture. But Carrie Lee has told me I cannot do it tonight. So, I'll finish just by saying, what the dogs do is to follow scent. And you can think of the scent they follow, a little bit like smoke from a cabin. And it follows, it goes along with the wind. And the dogs are trained to go find that scent, and then come back and tell us what they've found. It can be very complex, because if you've ever seen smoke coming out of something, it whirls around and eddies around trees. It goes up, over, and down things. On a warm day, it goes up. On a cool day, it goes down. So, it's actually a very complex business, and it's one of the reasons it takes thousands of hours. And they are able to do it because they move along these gradients up to the source. So, with that, I will turn it over to our 4x4 champions, who are the ones who often get us out to and back from the woods.
Yes. Thank you so much, all, for having us here today. My name is Sarah Audio. I'm a member with our 4x4 unit. I've only had the privilege of being involved with King County Search and Rescue for about the last two years with all of our dogs. What it looks like joining an organization like King County Search and Rescue, you know, you might think about the missions that were going on. What you don't see behind the scenes is our training, our gear investment, the time and money that we have to spend in order to maintain the level of exceptional care that our residents deserve and need. Over my first year, I went through what we call a novice year. It entails tens of hours of online training, passing certain state qualifications, minimum two field training days a month, multiple overnight weekend excursions. At the end of that one year, which for me was about April, thumbs up. I can go in the field. I've been through my training, and I'm able to help our residents. You heard a lot about our backcountry efforts today, about our hiker search and rescue team, our explorer team, being out in the woods. But something that I wanted to talk about actually was my first mission, which was here in Woodinville this summer. Carrie Lee mentioned our efforts around missing endangered individuals, often young children with autism, the elderly with dementia or Alzheimer's. Mine was actually a woman in Woodinville who walked away from a winery with her family, of all places. And you can imagine, being as a family member, the horror that you feel, knowing that this is what you've gone through. And to see the response that you get from King County Search and Rescue, actually, it was our explorer team, it was our dog team, and it was our 4x4 team who showed up to help run and initiate the initial response. It ended up being a multi-day mission, full eight-to-10-hour days of our responders and volunteers, and our partners in law enforcement here as well. The role that I played in that with our 4x4 unit is vehicle-based search. As we have the ability to cover broad road areas, help with containment, search from a higher-up place, and also local business engagement. You have some really great business owners here in Woodinville. I think I knocked down nearly every one of their doors to put up flyers and ask them to help spread the word. When you see the scale of a mission, I really, I wish I could have the opportunity to invite you all to see it directly. What you see is 30, 40, 50 volunteers leaving their homes, their jobs, their families. You don't see all the hours and training and the investment in their gear that goes in behind the scenes, but you see this beautifully orchestrated event where all of our units show up together and do everything we can to bring our loved ones home. I hope that's helpful to learn a little bit, not only about the backcountry wilderness search and rescue response, which is certainly a lot of what we do, but as a resident here in North Shore District, I wish I could claim Woodinville directly. I'm just over in Kenmore, but I don't want to neglect and overlook that really important suburban and more urban search and rescue efforts that we provide as well. And I think with that, I will open it up to Q and A.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Evans?
I am just, I'm in awe of the amount of time and effort and dedication that all of you put in to keeping our broader community safe. And thank you for bringing the Woodinville stories, but also just thank you for all the time and effort. I know volunteering like this and making sure that you're at the top of your game to go help people really takes a lot from your personal life. And so, I think it's just really important that we recognize you, and thank you for sharing.
Councilmember Wes Campbell?
I really enjoy that you are working with Washington Trails. They are people who know the area better than most of us do, since they cut it. The broader question, I guess, I have is that you're doing so much on a shoestring budget. What is it that would be on your wish list of things that you need? Do you need more collaboration with different businesses, organizations? Do you need, I don't know, some sort of legislation that would give people time off work so that they wouldn't have to make up time? What is the wish list, if you had to say, what would be the biggest thing that you need? What would that be?
That's a, that's a great question, councilmember. So, we're actually doing two things. One, we're engaging more with small businesses. It is a very valued partnership that we have with those small businesses. So, we're launching a small business initiative called 100 Businesses That Care. We're trying to engage with businesses throughout King County. There's a lot of weight put on the gateway communities to support search and rescue. But as you can see, this is a King County-wide mission. We're everywhere, doing things across the board. And so, engaging with those small businesses. So, getting the word out to the small businesses that there is a partnership opportunity that supports not just one, not just two, but nine SAR units within King County would be one. And two, we are working on a, we're working through a legislative effort as it stands. It's, hopefully, we'll be able to share more through Brandon as it comes about. We can get that to your attention. But yeah, we are looking at some more sustainable funding models that... A value alignment with these volunteers is they don't want to be dependent on taxpayers. They want the community to have the opportunity to opt in. And so, drafting something that's very specific to that relationship, where people get to say, "I choose SAR. I choose SAR." And so, we will absolutely be willing to share that as we get closer to that finish line. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you and the team and Puzzle. Thank you for coming out. Appreciate all the work you do. It's something that, when you need it, you need it. So, I'm glad that everybody's out there volunteering. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, Mayor Millman, councilmember's staff.
That brings us to public comments. Okay, when I call your name, please come to the microphone and state your name and whether you live in the city limits. And you'll have three minutes. First is Truman Jolly.
My name's Truman Jolly. I live over by Leota Middle School. So, I live in Woodinville, just next to where my granddaughter goes to middle school. So, that's part of my impetus for doing this. I sent an email to each of you, and the second part is I'm going to alert you. I'm going to send you another one. And the first one said, "What is ranked trace voting, and why am I excited about it?" And the key thing is that ranked trace voting balances majority rule and minority representation. And we're not doing that very well. So, I like it. And then you say, "Does ranked trace voting really help? How does it help? How does it implement that?" Well, the best example is, maybe before your time here, with 1998, the Belfast Peace Agreement in Ireland. And how many years did we wake up hearing about more bombings in Ireland? It was horrific. And so, it was really a miracle in our time that we were able to implement a stable peace in Ireland. in Ireland. And ranked trace voting is right in the middle of that. So I hope that gives you, that's the oomph in this, that the world needs more peace speakers, our nation needs more peacekeepers. And so thinking globally and acting locally, I'm urging you in the next email to lead ranked trace voting in Woodinville. First, I'm going to send you a link with a resolution that supports the Voices Act in the state. Okay? And say, what's the Voices Act? And what it's doing, it said, let's all implement ranked trace voting in Washington in a consistent way. You're saying that's a no-brainer. Right. I still need to pass it. Okay? So you're getting on the bandwagon. And you can look at the link and say, could you sign it? That's number one. Number two, a link for RCV 123. If you're saying you want to check out ranked trace voting, there's the tool, free web-based tool. You could use it in your council to help make decisions. First, kind of as a polling, and then start to make decisions with it. And it's, I'm amazed at how powerful it is, more powerful than the first out of the gate voting. So then the third thing is to encourage the use of ranked trace voting in Woodinville schools and community organizations. Okay? So this is the big three, and I'm promising you another email in your inbox. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Stadler.
Good evening, mayor and council. As always, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the Woodinville Heritage Society as president of the society. Before the meeting, I gave you each this card about a program that we're having on the 18th of October. The Woodinville Heritage Society is celebrating 50 years of preserving history in our community. And we continue to do that. The Woodinville Now and Then is going to be a great program presented by Gene Sherrod and Clay Eels. If you're familiar with the Now and Then in the Sunday Times Pacific Magazine, you know their work. It's really fantastic. It's rare that they do a program on a specific locale like this. So we really hope that maybe you'll find time to join us on the 18th at 10:50 a.m. up at Brightwater Education Center. And then I'll just point out too, that the week in before, in the Sunday Pacific Magazine, they will be featuring Woodinville. So we're going to get a little exposure there of our history. So that's all. Thank you very much. Let me take off that Heritage Society and just speak to you as a citizen of the city of Woodinville. I just want to thank you all for the work you do. I know this time of year, it can be challenging for, for some of you with people out there and that, and in light of recent activities. So please just keep your head high and continue to do the good work you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none? Consent calendar.
Move to accept the consent calendar is written.
Second.
A motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. That brings us to our first business item, which is now the study session to discuss integrated pest management policies. Mrs. De Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. We'll just pull the presentation up. I don't know if we can beat the presentation Puzzle did, but we'll give it a shot at it. Really excited to bring the study session for integrated pest management. I am supported today by Brian Meyer, Public Works Maintenance Supervisor, Joshua Jeffrey, Public Works Management Analyst, and also staff from King County Parks and from Mountains to Sound as well. So super, looking forward to this discussion. And as I mentioned, this is a study session, so not, staff is not requesting any formal action, but more discussion and to take this to the next step. And with that. As I mentioned, this is a study session, but just wanted to lay out just some outline for the, for the presentation, just to give some framework for council to provide feedback to staff and just more policy cushions as well. So just wanted to set up some agenda item for the presentation. So before we actually go into the actual policy cushions or just a framework, I wanted to highlight and define at very high level, what is an integrated pest management plan? And the integrated pest management plan also includes the key, one of the key things about IPM is the treatment methods. And that is the one that we are trying to focus on at this presentation and also all the future engagement that we are proposing. So we'll go over some, again, very high level treatment methods, setting the framework for providing discussion topics and items for council. So in addition to talking about the IPM itself and the treatment methods, we also wanted to bring to councils more as an information as to what the current practices are, current and past practices have been in maintaining all the landscape for vegetation, all the public spaces and public parcels within the city limits. So we wanted to talk about that. We do, as I mentioned, we do have staff from King County Parks, specifically Noxious Weed Board. We also have Mountains to Sound, that they will also help us provide some of, some information and guidelines on, on how this is managed. The city will also go over the, the actual maintenance practices and just highlight a couple of the pilot projects that you have all seen. So wanted to just touch on that, give some update on that. And this all leads to what is the policy cushions or some framework that we do want to eventually take it to public engagement, to community, and to, that would help us put together an actual IPM together. So that is the, that is the essence of today's presentation. And of course, some next steps, just to look forward as to what this is all taking, what, where is this leading to? So just a background on why we are bringing this topic to council tonight. Late last year, council directed staff to phase out the use of chemical herbicide due to community and resident concerns. At that direction, there were no formal policies for prioritizing treatments or assessing risks, but it was a direction that was provided. The city is, has taken that direction. And as the city is trying to implement that direction, there are cushions, there are observation challenges that the city staff is going through. And it is a discussion and another reason for having the study session so that there is a clear vision, direction, and guide for staff and also creating transparency and communicating to community and our public what the vision is. So that is another reason for bringing this, bringing this agenda item to council. In addition to, in addition to the other, the reasons that I just mentioned, in July of this year, city became a B-City USA affiliate. What that, one of the requirements of that is to formally adopt an IPM. And so that is the, another framework, another reason for having this discussion and a perfect opportunity for us as a city to evaluate the current practices. What is the vision? What do, how do we want to have a sustainable process moving forward? So that is the background and the reason for having this study session. So with that, I will pass it on to Joshua. Joshua will go over just very high level, again, just setting up the, just some technical high level information on what is IPM treatment methods? What are the pros and cons? What does the city use in terms of treatment? So next few slides, Joshua will go through some of this topics.
Thank you so much. So to start this conversation off, what is integrated pest management? Well, IPM is a science-based, sustainable strategy that combines biological, cultural, mechanical, and physical treatments to really address pests in the community. And pests are any of those problems that are weeds, fungi, insects, rodents, anything that either provides a safety or health hazard to residents, to stakeholders, to the natural environment. And so part of IPM's function is, is to balance different priorities and to provide a holistic framework for us to look at all of these types of issues. And one of the things that we do is it minimizes pesticide use. So instead of trying to just kill every, every pest that may be in the, in the, in the community, it looks at how, how can we kind of think about this and take appropriate management to those different solutions? Another thing it does is it addresses chemical use. And so a lot of times people have a thought that chemical and pesticides are the same thing. And pesticides can be chemicals. But also chemicals are not the only thing within a landscape management program that are considered pesticides. So you have fertilizers too, which are chemicals. You have different types of disease treatments that we do for trees and other landscape items that can support the health and growth and vitality of a, a environment that are also types of chemicals but aren't necessarily pesticides. So it kind of differentiates between the two. It provides a safety mechanism and framework for staff and also for the public to understand what's going on. And it really does try to protect the health and the environment in the process. So speaking of pesticides, they function in a lot of different categories. And so they're not just herbicides, which is root weed killer, but they're also insecticides, which target ants, spiders, anything that may be a particular pest. You also have fungicides, different types of avicides, monsides, rodenticides, and all of those subcategories that go into it. And another thing that's important to know about pesticides too, they don't all work the same way. So within each of those different major categories of what it's targeting and what it's trying to address, that, that problem it's trying to control, they have different ways of addressing them sometimes as a preventative action and sometimes as a response action. So what another thing IPM does is it tries to balance those two kind of conflicting priorities. Are you trying to prevent something or are you trying to react to it? So within this, pesticides are heavily regulated. Principally, the two largest people in this, this kind of party is the federal and the state governments. The EPA provides stringent regulations on pesticide safety, noticing requirements, variety of licensing requirements that are then brought through to the state, which defines it even further. Within the local context, we have somewhat limited authority. So the cities can restrict certain types of vegetation and manage signage and public notices within the municipality itself. They're, of course, have the ability to have IPM frameworks that define how we do business, but they don't necessarily go into things like licensing or outright banning certain product, products from, for instance, the marketplace. But all of the agencies work together to create a sustainable system that really understands both the land and aquatic environments. And all these also require certifications to use. Significant training goes into that, that, the use of pesticides, particularly in a commercial basis. So this all worked together for that. Within IPM, there really is this hierarchy of treatments. And so there's a variety of ways you can address different types of pests. And they basically fall into one of these main categories. The first of which is biological, which is the use of insects or different other types of biological mechanisms, goats, to really address whatever that, that pest is. Then you have a cultural one, which is where you start thinking about the actual plantings themselves and how they can either create a, an environment which causes pests to thrive or, or one that, that it's, they don't grow and proliferate as much. Then you have a mechanical, which really is how do we individually kind of address these issues on a smaller basis? So whether you're doing mowing, tilling, and different types of hand tools. Finally, you have physical, which includes different types of barriers you may include to stop pests from growing. And then you also have the chemical, which is your herbicides, your fertilizers, and your insecticides and all of that. To kind of think of how this framework works, you typically have two different types of systems, the prevention and the response. Prevention, if you're going to kind of use an example of a potted planted bed within a park, a biological method for, for, for controlling pests would be encouraging native wildlife, the birds and the beneficial insects to naturally manage pest populations. And so creating a habitat that's, that's responsible for that. When you think about the physical things you might do in that, that space, you would apply potentially cardboard layers to suppress weed growth and to kind of suffocate systems that, that wouldn't necessarily want to grow with, with weeds. When you're doing chemical, you would, would look at fertilizers and pre-emergent herbicides to support the healthy growth of, of the environment. And so all these treatment methods and a prevention kind of mindset are working together. They don't necessarily have a hierarchy that, that, that they have, but they work together as part of a overall solution, right? Then you kind of think about the response. So let's say you have a situation where there's a noxious weed or something that you would need to develop. Well, in that type of circumstance, we work from the most, the most responsive type of, of, of framework to the least invasive type of, of treatment. So the first of which, you would, you'd look at those biological and cultural solutions. Is there something we can do to, that would, would work within this framework where we're not damaging and otherwise causing treatment? Then you would move to more of a mechanical, something that's a little bit more, more invasive and more damaging for, for that environment. And ultimately, if, if that can't be happened, then you would look at applying potentially targeted, low-toxic pesticides that, that really address whatever that root cause is, and whatever that is the necessary and only minimal amounts. So together, those are kind of how you have a tiered approach to, to pest management, but also how they kind of function differently. When you're thinking also about what these methods mean. So within each of these categories, you have different types of treatments, like the physical ones with the hand weeding or the steam and foam weeding. But what happens is all of these different types of tools that we have in this toolbox to manage weeds and other pests, they have different labor intensities involved with them, different costs involved with them, as well as site and suitability issues that they don't always work as effectively in each, each particular solution. And you start dealing with, all of them have their appropriate applications, but they also have different trade-offs that you have to balance whenever you're encountering issues. And when we've tried to take a supportive role with, with the council's direction on limiting chemical usage, as well as establishing no-mow zones and, which are more of our mechanical means, it really takes two of those items off of our, our toolbox that we're using. And we, we have to really kind of think of how are we looking at the other items, our physical and balanced, and cultural and biological and balancing them to try and maintain the same level of service and the same aesthetic quality that, that we're used to. And you really look at, at the impacts of those things with, with in terms of, of cost and labor intensity as well. But a bigger question to this is what is the purpose of public landscape maintenance in general? And so why do we go through all this effort? Well, for us, it's really about providing equity and access, spaces that are welcoming for, for everybody, health and wellness, economic vitality. So you have landscapes that, that support businesses. It creates a sense of community identity too. We also are very knowledgeable and know that, that we have a climate resilience, that, that having landscaped spaces helps support the natural systems and create a sustainable environment. But another big key reason that we have managed public landscapes is safety and infrastructure protection. And for that, us, that includes improving site distances, removing those road hazards and liabilities, but also making sure that our stormwater systems are working the right way, root management isn't causing tripping hazards, all those things that go into that, making a space that's both walkable and livable and, and a place that people want to spend time and be a part of. And with that, I'll try. And with that, I'll try.
So we do, we are going to go back and forth, so just some patience with us as we are covering a lot of different topics. But we wanted to give council just the whole framework, the whole picture, to make that, to provide feedback to staff, and so that we can implement the direction and whatever vision that comes out of creating this document as well. So, as Josh mentioned, the purpose of public landscape and maintenance. So, how does city staff, the crew, does this? So we just wanted to give a really brief introduction on what does the, what is public work crew, how do they maintain? What do they do in terms of, not just landscaping, not the pretty willnot park that we see, but just also like our public parcels, our parks, our city parcels, East Rail Corridor, City Hall, they're all different spaces that are there. And what does our crew, who does this maintenance, and what do they do? So just wanted to highlight on that. So right now, we have 13 full-time employees and six seasonal, which are part-time staff, that maintain over 90 acres of parks and open space. So this is not, as I mentioned, this includes parks, trail system, and natural areas. They also maintain over 14 miles of bicycle and pedestrian pathways, like sidewalks. Close to 50 miles of paved streets, right-of-way, that also is part of the landscaping that the crew maintain. They also maintain landscaping and public spaces around City Hall, the public workshop, the athletics field. And so, this is, I wanted to make sure that it is clear. So these 13 full-time staff, six seasonal, that we have, and of course, Brian Meyer, who is here today, he's our maintenance supervisor, Keith Elufson, who's here as well, operations manager. This is just the actual landscape and vegetation control. They also do, the staff, the crew members also take care of our streets, take care of pothaulings, no event. So there's a much bigger workload that they actually focus on, but this is the, we wanted to focus on. These are the same crew that also maintain all our public space, our right-of-way for the city. I think we missed one. So I think, just very briefly, wanted to touch on this. Josh already went through this, what does the city manage? You know, we have the pests, we have the vegetation, we have just public facilities, we have right-of-way trails and all these spaces that our crew maintains. And it includes things, there are vegetation, parks, insects and rodents. So all that stuff that Joshua just very briefly mentioned, and different types of treatments that we use in here. I also wanted to, on this slide, just wanted to, on the right side, just a really high level, the resources we do to manage and maintain this. We spend approximately $2,500 a year on herbicide purchases, which is again, very selective and limited use, and also very specific to site. We spend approximately $4,000 on, and this is contracted pest control for our public facility, including City Hall, Council Chamber. I think there was, I don't know if it was last year or earlier, we had the Yellow Jacket, and did use some of that contracted pest control for that. We also have, this is our big one, which is the landscape maintenance. We do contract that out, and it's roughly $7,000, roughly $7,500 a month. And this is for landscaping the right-of-way specifically, and specifically arterial streets and state route, because of traffic control and also just the volume. So this includes, if you can think of all the roundabouts, so along 171st, 133rd, 135th, the tourist district roundabouts, the two, three roundabouts there, also just as you come into the city. So we have on-call contractors that are actually maintaining our right-of-way landscaping and other vegetation control for the city. Now, of course, these are on-call contracted vendors and consultants that we help out with, but we also partner with some jurisdictional partners, as we have here today. King County is one of our big partners that help us on the noxious weed control, that we'll go over that. And we also partner with Mountains to Sound a lot as well, and that is, they're a nonprofit organization, and they'll speak more about it as well. But we help, we partner with them for vegetation control, for mitigation, and also these in the areas where city staff don't necessarily have certain certification, or expertise, or training that is very unique to this area. So that's where they come and assist the city with it. So, we thought this would be a perfect opportunity to present to council, just give their, you know, just provide what they do, just highlight. And also, they are the experts in this field, so also having an opportunity for council to ask them any questions that you may have for both. So with that, I will have Josh introduce very quickly, and then we'll go to some really good presentation.
Please. Well, with that, my pleasure to introduce Rayo. And the Noxious Weed Board, as Asha mentioned, they really can coordinate weed control and provide resources to address noxious weeds throughout the county. They're one of several agencies, or several noxious weeds boards within the state, and I'll let her take it from there to talk a little bit more.
Thank you so much. Good evening, thank you for having me here. My name is Rachael Stamper. I'm the Policy and Communications Manager for King County's Noxious Weed Control Program. And yeah, next slide, please. All right. I wanted to start, I'm here to talk a lot about IPM, herbicide use, like the harms of noxious weeds, but I thought I would just start by giving you a little bit of overview of what a noxious weed control program is, how King County's functions, because I don't know that a lot of folks are familiar with this work. County noxious weed programs are authorized by state law under RCW 1710. And our state noxious weed board uses this law to classify weed species and determines landowner responsibilities for controlling those weeds. This law originates in a really agricultural setting, but it's been used in all sorts of different landscape settings, and it's really, really useful for kind of establishing sort of good neighbor protocols, how we can be good neighbors to one another, and prevent our weeds from blowing into our neighbor's yard, since weeds don't really follow legal boundaries. On that note, I wanted to mention that noxious weeds is actually a legal term, not necessarily an ecological one, and it's defined, a species gets defined as a noxious weed when it causes harm, it spreads beyond where it's planted, it's non-native to the state of Washington, and of course, it's hard to get rid of. And I'll skip the rest of the details, you can go on to the next slide. Okay, so I mentioned that for a weed to be considered noxious, it needs to cause harm, right? So I thought I would talk a little bit about what those harms can be. And before I kind of jump into the details here, I thought maybe I would kind of give a scale of this problem. The Washington Invasive Species Council estimates that our state loses almost $1.3 billion annually in productivity and jobs due to noxious weeds. That also includes things like mussels and insects and stuff like that. But I focus a lot on plants, which also have a lot of big impacts here as well. So, the first impact I want to talk about is public health. Poison hemlock's the first one that comes to mind for me on this topic, because it's toxic to both humans and animals. Garlic mustard and holly are both species that really create risks when we're thinking about forest health. And so, garlic mustard particularly on this kind of question of regeneration. What's the future of our forest going to look like? Is it going to look like a blanket of garlic mustard? Or are we going to see new sprouts coming back? Holly does a similar thing as garlic mustard in terms of suppressing the growth of native plants, but it also contributes to potential fire risk by creating ladder fuels, and that's going to be a really big threat. I want to talk a little bit about agriculture. Tansy ragwort, it's a huge widespread species in our region. It's toxic to livestock, particularly horses, and it really degrades the quality of parcel, of pasture lands. And another kind of final area I wanted to draw our attention to is the impact on water quality, and also recreation. Parrot feather is a great example of this, but there is a whole group of aquatic plants that can really disrupt aquatic habitats, which degrade water quality. So, yeah, next slide. So hopefully that gives you kind of a picture of what's the problem, and I'm sure you're thinking, okay, what next? It's a huge problem, how do we address this? Can we, do we have a strategy? I wanted to kind of share a little bit about how our program thinks about it, which may, I don't know, give you some context. We think a lot about how widespread the species is. So on the far left corner of this graph is where species are either absent, or they're just initially present. So that's our opportunity for prevention and eradication. And if our team is doing our job well, hopefully you'll never hear about these species in a King County context. You haven't seen Kudzu here, and I hope you never do. So we're out there, we're surveying a lot of natural spaces throughout King County, including Woodinville, of course, and making sure that those species get eradicated. When we move to that center, and we're thinking about more of a containment issue, we know it's widespread, we don't think we have an opportunity for eradication, that's not feasible economically, but we do have a chance to keep it maybe, yeah, from our neighbor's yard, or from getting into a waterway. And finally, when a species is super widespread, maybe like ivy or blackberry, we're thinking about more of this asset-based protection. Like, are there particular natural areas or green spaces that we want to make sure retain their value? Okay, so this is one way we think about how we deal with weeds. And next, because I'm here, you can go ahead for the next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about herbicide, kind of jumping ahead into the treatment methods, in part because our team is extremely high-trained in herbicide methods, and I thought maybe we could shed some light on that. And in terms of kind of how we choose a method, but then also, I'd like to share a few of my perspectives on importance of training. Okay, so, methods are really like a question of context, of cost, of timing. Every species is going to react a little bit differently to different herbicides. Some herbicides work really well on certain species, some species don't react to herbicides at all. We love it when we don't have to run into those, because there's usually bigger problems. Like, if you've ever struggled with bindweed or morning glory, part of the reason it's so resilient is that it can fragment and regrow from tiny little bits of itself, so it doesn't really work with herbicides. So really, we're always asking ourselves, okay, what's the species, what's the best method for that species? And again, back to the excellent description of integrated pest management, we kind of look in our toolbox and we see like what our options are. So sometimes, a really typical method is going to be foliar spray. And that's taking a very diluted amount of an herbicide. We'll, actually, our program will experiment quite a bit, see how low we can get that concentration before it's no longer effective, and covering all green elements of the plant with that herbicide. And that can be done with a backpack sprayer, with a hand sprayer, there's a lot of different application techniques for that. We really like this methodology because we can use that low-concentration amount, and we kind of can see that we've done the whole plant. Other methods, I kind of wanted to talk a little bit about, Cut and Treat and Easyject are methods for woody species, like trees. The Cut and Treat is, you cut it, and then you paint the herbicide on to the stump. With Easyject, you're injecting the plant with a lance, with an herbicide pellet. And then finally, we also use a hollow stem injection methodology when we can. That's with species that are, that have hollow stem, where you can actually inject the herbicide directly into that species, and it will uptake the herbicide. The one drawback with a hollow stem injection is you have to use a much higher concentration of herbicide. So maybe you're already seeing this pattern of drawbacks, benefits, you know, every method kind of has its pluses and minuses. And finally, I kind of wanted to mention here, the importance of training here. Applicators who don't know how to use these tools will inevitably make errors, potentially break equipment, cause spills, run risk of exposing themselves to chemicals, or maybe others. This creates, I think, also a huge public perception risk. So one of the things that our program focuses a lot on, even though we've been doing this for decades, every year we run trainings for our staff, regardless of how many years they've been doing this, reiterating the importance of signage, of communication, of being really respectful and receptive to the public when they have concerns, and making sure that, you know, they're going above and beyond to keep their workstation or their work area really clean and neat, and really showing that we're doing this work with care. I want to mention that, and maybe you can go on to the next slide, that our program has quite a few resources that we offer to the public, because we have invested all this time in learning these methodologies, we want to share them, we run trainings for municipalities throughout King County and throughout the state. We run a website that has quite a lot of detailed information about each potential noxious weed species and how best to address them. Yeah, and I'm here now to answer questions, if you have them, or we can save them for the end of the day. And I also brought some materials for you, all including a guide to noxious weeds, so you can learn more at your leisure.
Deputy Mayor Randolph has a question.
Since you're invited, I am curious, what noxious weeds do we commonly see specifically in Woodinville, especially since mostly what we're talking about is highly landscaped area? So what should we be aware of that's in the wrong places right now that we have to commonly treat, especially for what we're looking at?
Yeah, such a good question. Okay, so, top numbers for Woodinville include poison hemlock along roadways. This is something that's all over the county, but we definitely see it out here. You can also see it on like, if there's, often if there's like an abandoned lot, you sometimes see a big flush of seedlings coming through. So something we're always surveying for and keeping an eye out for. Technically, poison hemlock is only required for control on public lands, but we're trying to increase awareness so that private landowners take responsibility and eradicate that as well. I'd also mention purple loose drive along, and I'm sorry if I have the boundaries wrong, but along the San Amish River, we survey for purple and garden loose drive every year. We do see quite a bit of it. And in Little Bear Creek, we have a bit of policeman's helmet, and this like multiflora impatience, that I'm forgetting the specific name of, but there are these kind of wetland plants that grow in and among the reed canary grass. So we spend a little bit, quite a bit of time tromping through there, looking for those. Yeah, and I think those are the main ones, and I think there's actually quite a few tansy sites, which again, is like such a big concern when there is active pasture land. We tend to deprioritize it in areas that are less adjacent. But Woodinville is such a special spot, because you are really close to a lot of important agricultural lands. So, I think, yeah, I think that tansy is another one that I would keep a big eye on.
Just a quick follow-up to that was, I'm hearing a lot about integrated pest management, but I'm not hearing a lot about integrated pest replacement, because nature hates a void, and if you leave that bare land, any recommendations for replacement? Because if we cut it down, or spray it, and it dies, it'll probably come back, because some seeds will move into that area. So what is your feedback on that, especially as we're considering our integrated pest management?
Yeah, that's a great question. And one of, yeah, we spend so much time talking about how to kill these plants. But the truth is, like, I come from a restoration background that has a much more holistic approach to this. And if you kind of dig into it, it's that cultural piece that Joshua mentioned earlier, which is replanting. And that is a technique. And what that cultural piece is saying is, yes, nature abhors a void, you need to be replacing it with something, whether that's a full plan for replacing that wetland with new, you know, native wetland species, or maybe it is a roadside, and you have to be really specific about plants that are going to tolerate a really like high-heat, high-exposure environment. And so you're maybe looking for a different suite of species that you're going to replant with. That is an IPM approach. Yeah, and I think it's, yeah, it's going to be hardest when you're going to be, when you want a unnatural area, like forests will, you know, in 40 years, be shading out a lot of these weeds, whereas if you want an open wetland, you're going to be fighting these for a really long time. Whereas if you want an open wetland, you're going to be fighting these for a really long time. We're going to be fighting them all together, yeah.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
So in terms of how you help the cities, do you provide paperwork in terms of the framework? Do you come and train staff specifically? There's specific concerns over different pesticides and whatnot that you use. How does this collaboration actually work? We could talk about all the pest management stuff, but we aren't technically the ones who are going to be doing the work. It's going to be staff. So how do you, how do you present and train our staff?
Okay, yeah, that's a great question. So our, our legal obligation as a, as a noxious weed control program is to survey and make sure that regulated weeds get controlled. So that's kind of like step one for us is doing quite a lot of survey. We're gathering data, letting landowners know when they have species that need to be controlled. Okay, so that, a lot of that data we already have and we already are in communication. And so beyond that, some of the things that we, we have done include running, running trainings. You know, this is often at request. So last spring, we ran a training for the Port of Seattle to teach them how to use herbicides in their landscapes. We've run trainings for local nonprofits that then work on public lands throughout the county. I think the other piece that we've sometimes done, although I don't think we've done this in Woodenville, is we have a discharge permit from the state, an NPDES permit. And so sometimes if we need to do a treatment in a waterway or in a lake and the city doesn't have capacity to get that permit, we can do the work for the city because we already have been doing that paperwork because we're doing this work throughout the county anyhow. So that can be sometimes helpful. And then I think, yeah, more generally, just having this library of information and research is the other kind of big piece of assistance that, you know, I think folks around the state have come to rely on.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, and thanks for all this information. I have two questions for you. So the first is, how do you make sure that the pest management you're using is safe for the public, is safe to be around critical waterways? And then the, the, well, I'll let you answer that part first.
Okay, I'll try to tackle it as best I can because I think the term "safe" is, can be tricky. And, and so I, I like to kind of ask the question of like, what's safest? Or like, how can we make something safer or less toxic or least toxic? Rather than claiming that something is going to be 100% safe and no one's going to get hurt. People get hurt in our line of work all the time. Usually it's from falling over logs, but I also take the chemical exposure really seriously. And so one of the ways that our program has thought about this is, is being really clear about who's, who's an expert in what. And so our program is, has really developed expertise in figuring out how, how we're most effectively removing noxious weeds. And we've really looked to our colleagues in hazardous waste, in stormwater, to understand what's the toxicity questions at hand? How can we create tier systems that make sure we're only using least toxic chemicals? Or if there's a case where we really need to use something that's in a, a higher tier level, that we're asking for an exemption for that? So in the case of King County, that's, that's kind of like how we've set it up, right? Is asking our colleagues who study chemistry and toxicity to give us guidance on that, and then we abide by their, their regulation. We're also abiding, like was mentioned before, by EPA restrictions and Department of Ecology restrictions and Department of Agriculture guidance around herbicide use. So that's kind of how our program has approached that question of safety, yeah.
So for example, if there is a program going out, out here, right? And people are walking their children, they're walking their dogs, they're breathing it in, how do you make sure that people aren't coming into contact with this?
Oh, yeah.
And harming themselves, harming their pets, harming their children?
Okay, so a lot of our, we, we restrict access typically through the use of signage. A lot of times, we are working in areas that's not directly, you know, in a path. If we have to close a path because for some reason we need to spray within that area, we will. But typically, we'll be in, say, a forest adjacent to a path. So what we do is we have signage that we put up along all entries to that treated area with descriptions of what the species is, when it will be safe to re-enter. And I think that's pretty much the main thing. And sometimes we'll include information, like if we used a blue dye, that they should know, oh, yeah, like, we'll indicate which species we're treating and, and if we've used blue dye to indicate that species. So you typically, in our work, we're not coming in broadcasting, spraying every plant. We're walking through a wetland looking for, you know, one policeman's helmet. Or we're walking through a forest looking for a small patch of garlic mustard. We're spraying it. And so if you are a member of the public, you look to the side and you see a little blue plant, hopefully you've read that sign that said, this blue plant is dye from herbicide. So, so that's kind of our approach to public information, yeah. And a lot of these, I will also mention that I think this is something maybe folks aren't aware of if they haven't read the label on these, these chemicals, which is that typically the, the return, the re-entry time is, you know, as long as it takes the chemical to dry on the plant. Because at that point, it's really, the chemical has been absorbed into the plant matter. It's translocating, hopefully, to the root system. So we usually add a large buffer. We'll say 48 hours, like, stay, please stay out. That gives us time to come back and retrieve the signs. It gives them time to feel safe that, I hopefully, that they're safer, I should say, that they're not entering a place that, that they shouldn't be. So I'm always trying to kind of figure out, how can we build in more buffers into that? And hopefully that gives folks a, a little bit of a, a sense of knowledge about what's happening. Yeah, but I know, I know that people have strong feelings because I talk to them when I do this work in the public. And so I don't, I don't want to skirt around that. I, I think it's, it's worse if we ever are perceived as trying to hide it. That, that degrades public trust. And so I always want to be like as really upfront as I can when we are choosing to use an herbicide.
I would love to hear what we do for restricting areas, for signage, because I know we've gotten public comment that people are just spraying out here and dogs are sniffing around right as it's being sprayed.
So, and it has been a learning process for us. I, I will have to definitely say that. We are, we are starting, we have started to use signage. Of course, this area up front and even the Biocity Hall, we have not used any chemicals or even mowed for almost a year now. And we have since then also, if, before, we've started to put signs up that, you know, chemicals in use and just stay off for 48 hours. And we have put flags around when we do put, when we do have those applications. And I think that it is, what I think we might have, another thing that we are doing, lessons learned, is that we have to do a better job. And this is where we are, we are learning as well is the concentration of this. It is not a concentrated herbicide being applied. They're very diluted in very specific targeted locations and areas that we have used in the past. So that, I think, is, is what, what was done, is, is what we have done, what we are doing now. Of course, for last year, we haven't done anything with these areas. And we still have put, as you can see, there is now starting, we are starting to put signs up there as to what it is no more zone, you know, pollinator garden, because we started to get through, I call it C.Click Fix, but it's, it is the, through the, the Woodmill Works. Thank you. Woodmill Works, where we are starting to get complaints about staff neglecting work. But it's all part of education. You know, it is, we are starting to see, that's why we have put QR codes so that they can scan and they can go and say, this is what we are doing. It is taking a shift. It is a mindset shift. It's a perception, you know, why is, why is the city not maintaining this? We are seeing some of the areas increased pet waste because potentially they are too large and long and people can hide and not having to pick up. It's, it's, these are the things that we are starting to think through it. So I think I hopefully answered some of that question, but I'm just also trying to, so we, let me back up a lot of those things in there. So we are using, there's, even with wherever we use, we are targeted site-specific low, low dosage is what we are doing. So it isn't just come and take and spread everywhere. And that is not what it is. And that is not, has not been the practice of cities at all in any of the maintenance of any landscaped or public spaces. I think we, where we do get a little bit more conservative and aggressive is in the right-of-way, especially when there is a safety concern. It's like a poison hemlock or yellow jacket in De Young Park where we got complaints about kids getting stung. And so those are the ones where we do, in addition for it being a liability, just the safety as well. So the public spaces are the ones that we prioritize safety over keeping that area more natural per se. So I think that's where we would start looking at our toolbox. What do we do? We have put signage, but of course, you know, yellow jackets are not reading the signage and they spread throughout the park. And so that is also where we are starting to understand, like, how do we manage? And what is selective? Like, is yellow jacket something that, how, there's a balance in that as well in what spaces we are? So I don't know if that answers councilmember your question.
That's great, thank you. I know I'm way over time, but thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, I really appreciate. Decades ago, I had a crane fly infestation in my yard, which was tearing it all up, but it was rain moles, which was tearing it up even more. And I applied a chemical to the yard. I got it at Home Depot and it eradicated everything. But I'm sitting there watching, the moles went away, but I'm watching the birds get the grubs. And I'm like, I just felt awful about this. It was just terrible, never did it again. So I'm really proud that we're taking chemicals out of our food chain and out of our ecosystem and the waterways. I think it's important for us to lead by example and do this for everything that we are, should be good stewards over. So I really appreciate it. I'd also like to point out that our city manager last did a very low-cost method of pest control. He, he got on leather gloves and captured a bat here at City, City Hall. So he went above and beyond for city manager. Appreciate that. Thank, thank you for your time.
I just wanted to mention that we do work with King County Parks Weed Control Board specifically more on the poison hemlock. Deputy Mayor, that was your question. The poison hemlock has been the one where they help us in terms of the survey, identify locations and areas where these species are, and they also help us treat them.
Great, and that's my, my pleasure to introduce our Mountains to Sound Gateway Trust. This is a conservation organization that really is an important partner for the city. They've helped on several of our projects, from trails to stormwater mitigation, plantings with, with trees. They're important, part of this community and important, and we appreciate their help. And here with us today is Tor Bell to, to talk about a little bit how they view integrated pest management, what they, works with their conservation efforts.
Hi, my name's Tor Bell. I'm the Operations Director with Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust. Thank you so much for having me today. I'm going to just take a few minutes here at the very beginning just to quickly explain who we are as an organization. And then I'm going to dive into our integrated pest management and talk a little bit about the decision we made 20 years ago to start on a very specific way of using herbicides for some of our work. So I can speak to that, and then I'll take questions. I'll try to keep this brief so that there's more time for questions. So just to begin, the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust is a Seattle-based nonprofit organization that has been working in the area for 35 years. We have a 35-year history here. Our mission is to lead and inspire action that works to conserve and enhance the landscape of the Greenway. Next slide, please. And that landscape stretches from Seattle to Ellensburg along the Greater I-90 corridor, includes three watersheds. Woodenville is very much part of the Mountains to Sound Greenway. 1 million, or 1.5 million acres, 1 million of that is in protected public lands or some other kind of conservation status. It was designated as a National Heritage Area by Congress in 2019. National Heritage Areas are areas that recognize culturally, historic, and ecologically important landscapes. We were the 50th designated NHA, which is, is administered by the National Park Service, designation administered by the National Park Service. Next slide. So I'm just going to run through a couple of things of what we do quickly. Over those 35 years, over 350,000 acres conserved and put into public ownership. For those who are around in the early 90s, a lot was happening and change was really happening. Timber wars were happening up in the Forest Service and DNR lands. We really worked to get a lot of that into public ownership, and that's been very, very successful over these years. Next slide. We have an environmental education program. We work with nearly 1,500 students a year, 44 paid high school interns to get kids on the landscape in the classroom, really learning about how to be the next generation of stewards, what salmon habitat looks like and how they can conserve and protect salmon habitat. So really important part of our program. Next slide, please. Another area is outdoor recreation. We maintain 50 miles of trail for the Forest Service and State Department of Natural Resources every year. And really are working up and down the I-90 corridor to make that happen with volunteers, with crews, and with paid contractors. Next slide. But I'm here today to talk about habitat restoration and specifically the work that we've been doing over the last 25-plus years. We currently have over 500 acres in restoration. And just last year, we planted nearly 10,000 trees. And this really builds on work that got started in 1994 and has continued all this time. We work with over 13 different cities, three state agencies, one federal agency, and two counties. And that's the area that we're working. And that includes the city of Woodenville. We've been working with you all on different restoration projects. And our expertise, just to be very, very clear, is natural lands. We don't work on right-of-ways and those kind of areas. We're really focused on forested areas, riparian habitat and the like. Those are really our focal point. And we've been working with you, excuse me, you all on knotweed, on Little Bear Creek. We've been working on Little Bear Projects, Rotary Park, a mitigation project with you all. Thank you, Sammy. Been a fantastic partner here. And really, another great part of the work. We're always looking forward to being out and seeing that work continue. Next slide, please. So when it comes to weeds, integrated pest management, we didn't use herbicides 20 years ago. We were focused principally on two options, manual and mechanical. The manual coming in the form of hand-grubbing blackberries, ivy, pulling, all the rest that goes. Many a young person has been out there pulling weeds with us. We would get school groups out, volunteers. We get four to 5,000 volunteers out a year pulling weeds, planting trees with us. And that manual component is a really, really important part of the work we do. We also have had our own crews do it, as well as paid crews come out and manually control, control weeds. We also do a lot of mechanical work, and that can be in the form of brushcutters or mowers and hiring contractors to come and do the mowing of these areas. We don't use goats, much to the chagrin of some of my staff. And I'm like, where are we going to put the goats? Um, nobody wants them in their homes. So, but we have been using mechanical effectively as a tool in the toolkit for quite some time. Deputy Mayor, you asked, what are the principal weeds we're going after? Knotweed, ivy, holly, and blackberry. And that's true here as well. And that's true here as well. I mean, that tends to be true of more riparian habitat areas. The noxious weed program works on a lot of those kind of high Class A, Class B noxious weeds. We're working on everything that's up and down the creek system and that we're really trying to restore habitat for. So why did we start using herbicides? Back in the early 2000s, people were trying to wrestle with what to do with knotweed. For those of you, it's a weed grows, what, 12 to 15 feet tall, segmented hollow stem in riparian, along riparian corridors. It takes a fragment, very small fragment, to wash away, break off, wash downstream, and repopulate. And so it is ubiquitous and everybody was trying to get rid of it. And this was introduced from Asia back in the 1920s. It's really created havoc because it really destroys a lot of important salmon habitat and creates monocultures through these areas. So what were we doing? Well, we were cutting it down first and letting it compost. Not a great idea. But then the idea was like, well, we don't want to use herbicides, so we're going to go ahead and cover it. And so for four years, we had crews out working on a pilot project with the city of Issaquah, where we would take landscape fabric and cover these areas and have nothing but the fabric pinned in. And then the crew's going to go stomp on it. When they tried to grow back up and tempt the thing, you know, we did that for four years. It didn't work. It just always came back, always came back over and over and over again. And it was at that time, we started really working with both King County Noxious Weeds and really reading the research about how to deal with some of these things beyond the manual and the mechanical. And we decided that it was an important tool to have in our toolkit. We would use it sparingly, but there were areas that we needed to use it. And so we have gone ahead and adopted the best management practices developed by King County, developed by the State of Washington and others to control select weeds. There are places for it. Blackberries on steep slopes, it's another one. We'll go in and cut those down, but if we were to grub all of that out, you're exposing all of that soil right. And then it becomes an issue for, you know, sedimentation into salmon streams. There are opportunities like that. Same thing with a lot of the holly control. That can be really disruptive in some areas. So really going and using very selective herbicide treatments, the Easy Jacked Lances that we were talking about earlier that you heard about, and selectively using those herbicides. So that's, that has been kind of our orientation towards it. All of our staff are licensed. They go through regular trainings every year. We follow all of the WSDA requirements, EPA labels, and then we do go and get our ecology permit with our MPDES permit that's required. Next slide, please. So I wanted, this isn't in the, in Woodinville. This is Issaquah Creek at Lake Samamish State Park. And does somebody have a pointer by chance? Anybody have? I was going to just, if you go and look, this is an important thing. I just want to show you, this has been 20 years in the movie. You see the light green that's all along? Whoa. You see the light green along the creek? All of that. So Issaquah Creek, or Lake Samamish State Park is 500 acres. We started a restoration plan and effort out there 20 years ago. Of that 500-plus acres in the park, 100 acres of it was blackberry. That's all that light green that you see. All that light green in there along the creek is nothing but blackberry. We came in, we mowed it. There was just too much of it for, we, we had, we had volunteers out there for days. We finally brought in mowers, we mowed it. And then when the weeds started coming back and they're low, to really minimize the herbicide use, we don't want to be spraying up here. That's health and safety for the applicators and anybody around. We went and mowed it and then very, you know, when it's down low, you know, selectively treated it. If you click to the next photo, you're asking about replacement. That's the same, that's the exact same area. All of those areas are now trees. We have been planting out there. We've installed over 50,000 trees and shrubs out in that park. We've had 70,000 volunteer hours contributing to this effort. And this is very much our version of integrated pest management, which is about, you know, using all these different options and tools in the toolkit. But we want to make sure that we get these areas, these natural areas back to hell, really significant healthier states than they've been in. With that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you for this. I'm a donor. I really appreciate your organization.
Yeah.
I have a question for you. Any of this, especially since you brought up Issaquah, is any of this Milwaukee Forest management? So Milwaukee Forest planting? Because I know Issaquah has one.
This is on state parkland, so this is outside of the city of Issaquah.
Okay. So have you done any of that along with your restoration and reclamation to have all those native plants that grow very densely?
That is the principle that we've used. We, we tend to overplant and we will actually have to go in and thin some of the alder trees, for instance, because they're too thick and we want the native conifers reestablishing. But we want to get the alder canopy, that's a natural primary successional forest, to shade these weeds out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do you, do you work with Mid Sound Fisheries? They do something pretty similar along Lake Samamish River?
Yeah, we absolutely work with Mid Sound. We actually, they were out on a tour with us this summer looking at some of the work we were doing. We're going out with them. We all learn from one another.
We, we went out and a group of us went out to Udo Bothel Campus and they do a really good job of, of low chemical maintenance. And they do kind of what the deputy mayor was talking about. They've, they've cleaned areas up and then they crowded out with the species that, native species that'll crowd out the stuff that they don't want growing and they do a fantastic job, so.
Yeah. It's, it's really important and this is, I, I will say, I started with the organization 23 years ago. I've been watching this take place. It's really rewarding to see it, but it takes that long. You know, this isn't kind of a one-and-done activity.
Any other questions? See, I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to add, as part of our stormwater permit requirements, the Department of Ecology, Mountains to Sound, help us meet some of those requirements, especially along Little Bear Creek. So, and hence are one of our partners.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here and giving us some more insight into what you do for us and overall as a, as just the whole ecology. So appreciate it. So moving away, we are trying to city in, in light of the direction that we receive. We do, we did try out goats and we did try out goats at Woodinville Heights Park. They were, of course, the area that we had, you know, that was presented is very different, much smaller area for us, much smaller park than the whole Little Bear Creek area. But we did, they were effective in reducing the dense underbrush in short time. What, some of the, some of the things that we would have to keep in mind with using, if this was biological treatment method, if we call that, this would be, it was cost prohibitive. It is, I shouldn't say cost prohibitive. It has cost impacts. That is what it is. It is 4,000, we spent close to $4,000 for three days to clear the small Woodinville Heights Park. It does require certain additional treatment, electric fencing infrastructure that we have to do. It is non-selective. So even if there is an ornamental landscaping or landscaping, neighbors landscaping, we had to be, we had to make sure the neighbors landscaping was not taken care of instead of what was happening in the parks. So, but we did try it out, just one of the ways, trying different ways to see what treatments work and what treatment doesn't work. So just wanted to share the pilot projects that we have done and what we have seen. And of course, I think that we talked about this right in front of the City Hall. Council chambers and City Hall, we are trying a pilot program on that one. We have no mow zones and no mulch, and mulching. We have a separate, the whole goal there was to suppress weeds and support, support pollinator habitat. That is what the goal is there. I think with having signs, having QR code, taking them, providing that additional education. And I think it is also a mindset and shift in the community that this is what the city is shifting towards. These are, we are creating these pockets of no chemical use, leaving it in natural landscape, supporting pollinator habitat. But these are the smaller areas that where we could do these, these pilot projects. Some of the, as I mentioned already, some of the feedback that we have received, perceived negligence on city crews' part. But again, it was education. This was intentional. This is the goal and this is the purpose of what it is. So I think there's a lot of signage education as, as we also talked about that in the noxious weed control is just the signage education. And it's another thing that the community has to come to terms with. What does, what does aesthetics look like? Is it just nicely mowed landscaped public space versus natural habitat? And I think that is also what is, is a shift that needs to be educated, that needs to be managed as we go along with this direction. We have also tried out different type of plantings in our, this is the roundabout right across from Chateau St. Michelle. We are trying out different type of plantings to see suppress weeds and see if we can also at the same time handle the safety of the side distance. So what can we do instead of creating, having the, you know, taller vegetation and bush? Can we go try out different types of planting that we could do? This is not necessarily pollinator-friendly. Or of course, there are pollinator, but not specifically looking, but it is also a type of planting that requires least amount of maintenance and could be potentially, you know, a pollinator habitat that we could do. So trying out different places where we can in the public spaces. But again, starting it out small and then working our way to bigger spaces. As I mentioned, there are challenges, there have been challenges over, over this last year. This is actually a perfect example. And this is actually our Israel corridor. And here you can see, I'm sure, there are other people that will validate what I'm seeing here. There was poison hemlock on this corridor. This was the corridor that was identified by King County, noxious control weed right around there. You can see blackberry on the right. So this corridor is, if not treated and mitigated and restored, will be eaten up by noxious weed. So that is, this is where we do reach out for help from King County, from Mountains to Sound. Of course, Little Bear Creek is on the other side. So this is one of the, if, if not treated, not handled, this is the area that potentially could get encroached into. So I wanted to have Brian Meyer, who is our maintenance supervisor, who does this whole landscape, maintains this crew for, on a daily basis, hourly basis. I wanted him to just kind of give some feedback and provide insight into some of the challenges that the crew faces and some of the ways that we can help, council can help provide feedback and also just the community provide feedback for them to deliver level of service, whether it is in aesthetic, whether it is vision, whether it is sustainable, ecological. And so I think we just wanted to highlight some of the areas where they potentially would need some feedback or guidance or just to see what challenges that they are facing.
Good evening. As Asha mentioned, the, this is a great slide to start off with and I want to use the next couple of slides to, to show these challenges that we, we encounter through the past years and, you know, in this last year especially. This slide right here, the poison hemlock is just beginning to, to show up in areas like this. Right behind it, that, that darker green, I guess, is a nice cluster of Japanese knotweed. And then on the right side of the trail is the Himalayan blackberry that we, we see quite often. And then not, not in the picture, but behind that knotweed cluster is, and on the other side, a Little Bear Creek Parkway is private property. And that's really another source for that Himalayan or that poison hemlock. And it's established and it's starting to, to show up in our right-of-ways. We have that in other areas of the city, but this is probably one of the more prevalent areas right now. Next slide. As Tor mentioned, the restoration projects and the slide on the left there is a, is a picture of one on the Samamish River. And the city has hosted several of these through the last couple of decades. And you can kind of see, it's fairly labor-intensive. It's a lot of grubbing and then planting the native plants and then letting them go. Rotary Park, which is the photo on the right, we've done some of those projects in there. And, you know, you, you turn your back on these restoration sites and they just, this is what comes back and it feels like a heartbeat. But it just needs constant maintenance to kind of keep that blackberry out of there. Rotary Park has also got a fairly strong concentration of Japanese knotweed. This picture is taken from a creek overlook in Rotary Park. And you, at this point, you can't even tell that there's a creek there. It's fairly, fairly well-established. Excellent. This is one of our landscape areas down in the tourist district in between Willow's Lodge and Chateau St. Michelle. The photo on the left is how it was installed or a few years after it was installed. And then this last year, we've really kind of, this gives you an idea of kind of a more natural influence. And you kind of can see the difference between the two. I, I kind of wanted to point out here that on the slide to the right, you really lose that definition when you kind of start allowing the, the more natural look to come in. So you just lose that, that crisp look, I guess. And then this slide is a couple of examples of our, our right-of-way. The, the slide on the left is the center roundabout down by Hollywood Schoolhouse. And I want, I wanted to use these slides to kind of show, these landscapes were installed 20 years ago. The one on the left was 20 years ago. And it was really kind of a dense ground cover based. And that's kind of that lower ring there at that gazebo. And the plant has done well there. It's, it's starting to struggle and thin out and the, and the weeds are starting to come in and, and kind of incorporate into the, the ground cover. And for us to control that, it essentially is trying to walk out there and then wiggle your hand through a really kind of rigid, woody ground cover to try to pull that. But also you're, as you're doing that, you're walking on this kind of brittle wood structure that you're doing more damage trying to get to the weed than, than you're helping probably in some cases. And then the, the slide on the right is Wood Duvall Road up by 156, just east of 156. And another landscape that center median was planted really densely at the time. And it's not a lot of room for maintenance, maintenance crews to, to get in there and, and maintain. But even to let that go to that natural land, that natural, more natural look, I guess, you'll see how it could easily just start encroaching and conflicting with the travel lane. We were working with that as it is now. And, you know, a, a different look would probably enhance that and make it a little more challenging from there. And then the last slide I wanted to present is, you know, it's not just vegetation. I think we, we mentioned insects. And, you know, just this summer, we, this is a picture of De Young Park and a bee's nest that has established itself there. And we probably come across at least a half a dozen nests in our parks along. And we probably come across at least a half a dozen nests in our parks, alongside walks, pathways. And, you know, this one came to our attention by a little, a little one getting stung and her mother coming, calling the city. So, you know, it's something that is somewhat of a safety issue when we, we do encounter these, these sorts of things. And it's been somewhat of a challenge just to kind of keep on top of it.
Thank you, Brian. I think I wanted to add a couple of things, a couple of places you probably have already seen the, and the roundabouts that you're seeing are being maintained by our contractors. So it's contracted out and they have been directed to not use any chemicals to maintain those landscaped areas, which they have been doing. What it does is it is labor intensive as they are handpicking the weeds out in their, or they're waiting for it to grow certain length or certain height. And that's when they're removing, because it is a labor intensive work. And it is potentially going to have budget implications on those areas. I think that where we are right now with those right of way, public spaces is especially even on Wood De Val, we have to have them put extra effort to ensure that landscaping is not encroaching the travel lane. We are also making sure there are sidewalks because there are, there are weeds that are growing out of the sidewalk panels that we are trying to also, to the extent we can, we used our seasonals to maintain those sidewalk using hand tools and hand doing, using mechanical and physical labor. It does, can be addressed in that way, yes. But what it does is there are budget impacts and resource impacts that come with it. So I don't think that, I didn't want council to see that these are challenges. These are, these are, the directive is something that the staff wants to support and wants to implement. It's our, what are the, what are the impacts or consequences that, that come with it? Which is, you know, as, as we have seen, definitely the look, the visual, which again, it's more maybe public education and outreach. And that's one of the, one of the main things that we can do. But we also wanted to bring to council's attention, potential budget and resource impacts that we could see, that we wanted to evaluate and we wanted to bring that to your attention and not wait and have these discussions with you.
Councilmember Arnt.
Thank you. And I really appreciate this detailed presentation from everyone. I mean, it's very apparent, the complexity that the city maintenance staff has to deal with. We're not just talking about wild areas, but we've got roadways and we've got public parks and everything in between. So it's going to be a complicated solution and I definitely need to consider the different functions of the spaces when we're talking about where we fall on this plan moving forward. I think that focusing, one of the things that's been highlighted in this last section is this mismatch between some of the landscapes that have been planted over the last few decades and the change of direction that we want to see as a council and where we want to go with our landscape management. So for me, that says that we need to, that this is going to be a lengthy process to actually make the complete transition and that we need to focus on the, the green preventative things that we can do now, the way we invest in our new plantings, the way we are slowly educating the community about what it looks like and what they can expect so that we can reduce that reactive maintenance and save those really heavy duty chemicals or the really expensive physical labor and those sorts of things for when we really need it and do all that preventative stuff, front load that so that we are creating a, a system that is easier and cheaper to maintain over the long term in this new style. So a lot of public engagement, I think, and I know you guys know that, I've seen the, the staff report and the plans for that. I think that is step number one and figuring out where we can move forward in a way that is cost and time effective with the expertise we have in house about in the transition. It's all about the transition. As any landscape that you plant, you need to refresh after so many years, you know, alongside roadways. So it's coming up with that plan of how can we progressively improve and not let that perfection get in the way, you know? I definitely heard the point that just saying no chemicals ever is a very costly in terms of time and money and labor alternative. So how can we move forward progressively without getting in our own way here?
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
So one of the survey questions has, I guess, an oblique reference to, to what the cost benefits are going to be, but I think we should have something that's very explicit because I think everyone in the community would say, nope, no chemicals ever. They weren't here for these presentations to hear what we had to say. But I do think there needs to be something explicit that says, okay, so do you know how long it takes you to weed your yard? What we're talking about in terms of cost, it's orders of magnitude more expensive to go that route. So I think part of the outreach needs to be, okay, if you truly do want something that is chemical free, like this is the, this is what it's going to cost. And I think in a ballpark, this is our current amount of money that we spend on landscaping. This is what it would cost if we went with a hybrid approach where we did, where we use it based on specific criteria. But if you want to go completely chemical free, like this is what it's going to cost. And I think giving people a perspective of there's your ideologies of what you want, but then even noxious weeds understands that you can use chemicals in a very controlled manner. I think making sure that the public understands how much we're talking. We're not talking a thousand dollars here and 4,000 there. Like we're talking a hundred thousand dollars for someone to pull weeds four times a year versus chemicals that you use diluted strength three times a year potentially. So I, I would like to see something incredibly explicit about what we're talking about in terms of budget hits because that is really, is that where we want our resources allocated? Do we want them allocated to weed pulling or would we like it to, you know, actually building out east rail to look like something that's just not someone who's hand pulling weeds? So I, I would really like to see that more specific.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. I also think that we should be specific about what the space is going to be used for. So I know out here, people think of that as their lawn space. And even at UW Bothell, they have lawn space areas. They just don't remove the clippings. They leave the clippings there so that it can reintegrate. So I think we have to be really clear about what the space is intended for. Like we can't, where we're going to put the stage over in Willmont Gateway, we can't let that just go because then we're negating the entire use there. And then building on what councilmember Arnt said, I, I think we should really take a look at what are the spaces that we're talking about. So I know specifically, people were very concerned about the use in parks and around City Hall here where kids are rolling around on the grass, where dogs are sniffing all over the place and people were really concerned that, you know, the Pollock Works was just spraying with no signs, with no fencing it off and their dogs were getting right in it. And so again, I think it's, it's just getting those in place and being really clear, what are we using this space for? And what's the intention and how much, how much is it important that we don't use chemicals? And I would say in parks where we have, you know, play areas with kids and when we have spaces like this where people are going to congregate and sit on the grass and, and really interact with it, I think we need to be really careful with that. But at a median and a roundabout, you know, that's, unless people are trying to dodge traffic and run across and be in the middle there, like that's less of a safety concern.
Deputy Miranda.
I, I heard you say like budget three times, which of course calls budget, budget, budget. I'm curious if you can speak to the things that are actually increasing budget. I think what I was hearing is, oh, plants are growing into the street. And also whether that's the budget for our contract or our 13 employees that you mentioned earlier in this presentation? Because to me, those are different things, like in terms of budgetary action.
So, and we will, this also addresses, hopefully addresses councilmember Bess Campbell's question as well, is that we will potentially see, and we are working with the contractor that's doing our landscaping in the roundabout and the right of way, that we are working with them to see what the implication would be in terms of the budget. That is one, in terms of using them. And also to get from our staff, you know, right now we are you doing, in terms of maintenance and in terms of which spaces are we using labor, physical labor is on like sidewalks, is on public spaces, on east rail, on the trail. So I think that we've, as we are looking at this, it's been almost a year, I think that it would be budget impacts would be on both the on-call or the contract work that we do and in addition to our staff itself, the resources. As to what those numbers are, we don't have that information, but that is something that we would be looking at as we, we should be starting to get numbers from our on-call. The other thing is also what level of service are we trying to maintain? You know, I think that is the thing. Are you okay, is the community okay seeing weeds coming out of the, the roundabout landscape as you, as you just move through that? It's also that, it's a level of service in terms of the questions that we get, what is going on here? Why are you neglecting this? And that is education, but in terms of this is the new look we're going with, some of it. If it meets the safety in terms of side distance and if it is not encroaching the travel lane, this may be the new look that we are going with. And that comes down to again, education and transition to it. But then also it comes down to, you know, we are starting to also look in our projects too. We have started to rethink on our Tressor project. It was landscaped before, like the whole corridor that we were thinking, and now we are creating pockets for pollinator pockets and trying to do some, trying to do some experiment in projects in that will that initial capital will be expensive? Yes, because it's something different than what we have done before. We have, so I think that budget implication, deputy mayor, could come in terms of the contracting, could come in terms of resources, and it could come in terms of project cost. But with the goal that eventually does that long-term translate into cost savings? And I think that, so the initial, there is that curve to get to that space. So I think that's, that's where, that's where this will evolve into.
Yeah, I, I was thinking that exactly because you kind of say, if we're not cutting it anymore, then once the actual labor costs is involved, considering there, there shouldn't be any labor if there's no effort.
Correct.
And that'll be a transition that we'll make, but it'll be interesting to watch that change over time and look forward to future reports.
Anything else? I've seen on, yeah, I, I think now's a good time to be experimenting with this, especially we're building out our parks and trails, east rail corridor and stuff to figure out what's working for us, what's not. I, I'm, for one, I liked a lot of what they did at the UW Bothell, especially the natural areas and, and, you know, like lots of wildflowers and pollinator stuff, looks really good. And it looks to me like it's low maintenance, but I could be completely wrong, so.
And I also wanted to address is, you know, there are certain things that we have to do as part of ecology, as part of just maintaining that habitat along our creek, along our water bodies. And also to address like the noxious weed. I mean, those are the ones that we do work with partners and with people that have that expertise and training. So we'll continue to do that, continue to partner with them to the extent we can and also potentially get our staff trained and certified in those. But that is all part of this program to get to the next step.
Thank you. Brings me to business site, next business item, my noun number nine is public hearing and 2025 mid biennial budget review. Mr. Fritz.
Wait a minute, aren't we starting with LTAC? Are we going nine and then back to seven?
Yep. Sorry, LTAC Lodging Tax Committee Advisory Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as you noted tonight, I've got some grant recommendations for 2026 funds from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Before we get too far into it, I just wanted to provide a bit of background and framework to set the table for tonight's recommendation from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee or LTAC as it's called. There are few state requirements when it comes to spending revenue from lodging tax. It must be used on tourism marketing, marketing of operations of special events and festivals designed to attract tourism and/or support for the operations and capital expenditures of tourism related facilities. Within those parameters though, the city has some leeway to, on how to allocate that fund, funding. To facilitate that process, the city holds an open application period every year. This year, that application window opened on June 27th and closed a few weeks later on August 15th. Those applications were reviewed by the LTAC and they, at their September 4th meeting just a couple of weeks ago, unanimously recommended a funding proposal for council's consideration tonight. So with regard to that funding proposal tonight, council can choose to accept or reject funding for each applicant or can even award funding amounts different than LTAC recommendations. But this would require the changes be brought back to LTAC for their comment and review. And then those comments and review would appear before council again, before the end of the year. The other option, of course, is that council can accept the committee's recommendation as it appears. And next steps would be to get the contracts with applicants in place so that funding can be released as soon as possible for their years, use next year. And we're aiming to allocate grant funds while maintaining the city's reserve balance of $50,000. After that reserve is accounted for, the city is projecting to have 195,000 available for 2026 funds. So a little bit about the applications we received during the application period, the city received a total of 15 applications. 14 of those were deemed eligible, one was deemed ineligible. Regardless of their status, all 15 are included in your materials tonight in full for your review. We determine eligibility based on a number of criteria. I won't bother reading every single one of these bullet points as they appear on the screen. But suffice it to say that the ineligible application was determined as such as it was submitted by and for a for-profit business, whereas eligibility criteria requires a nonprofit status. Again, as I said, even that one is included in your materials tonight for reference. Also, I wanted to note that Woodinville Wine Country's application for area familiarization tours unfortunately included a couple of errors as it appeared before LTAC. Specifically, the application for this effort was funded, that was funded last year, was resubmitted for this year's funds or this year's grant cycle. While the scope and purpose didn't change much year over year, the requested funding amount was intended to be increased, be increased from $7,000 to $8,000. The corrected application for 2026 funds is included in your packet tonight. And the table you'll soon see with LTAC's recommendation includes that corrected $8,000 request. So as I said, LTAC meeting was held a couple of weeks ago on September 4th. It was chaired by council's very own deputy mayor Randolph. Remaining committee members include Rick Chatterton, representing the Chamber of Commerce, Cameron James, representing Woodinville Wine Country, Janine Varden of Willow's Lodge, Jim O'Connell of Hampton Inn and Suites. And first up, the committee, of course, did some housekeeping and approved minutes from last year's meeting. And then the committee heard updates from grantees for 2025 funding, so funding currently underway. Then the committee moved on to addressing applications for next year's funds and heard from nearly all applicants about their plans for the funds and their proposals. And then next, the committee had the unenviable task of allocating a limited amount of funds among numerous worthwhile applicants. Despite that task, the committee was able to provide a unanimous approved funding recommendation that you'll see here. So I'll talk slowly so you can all kind of review this as I speak, but as you can see, the majority of applications were funded at or near their requested amount. Three applications were not funded at all. Those are at the bottom of that table there. Three applications were not funded at all, those are at the bottom of that table there. All told, the LTAC's recommendation uses all of the $195,000 in available funds and continues funding for a number of well-established events and activities that drive tourism in Woodinville that really speaks to the point of the LTAC funds. And I can come back to this table if you'd like to review it further, but for the sake of the conversation tonight, next steps would be proposing a different funding amount to any or all of the applicants to do this. Again, council would need to express consensus and direct staff to see comment from the LTAC, and again, we would bring that comment and review back to council once it's delivered by LTAC. The alternative, another alternative is to fund the grants as recommended by LTAC. Council can take action on this tonight, and if they'd like to do so, we've got recommended motion language here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Oh, I was just going to go ahead and put forth a motion to approve the funding for the 2026 Lodging Tax Grants as recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion of second, Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Usually, if we change this, we have to take it back to the LTAC committee, so unless there is a very strong feeling that one of these grants is either not deserved or doesn't fit, then we probably should stay with what they have, because it would probably put us beyond the scheduling for some of the events themselves. So I do think there are considerations that we'll want to make for future years, especially as we're getting additional hotels that are moving into the city, and that's all I had.
Councilmember Art?
Thank you. I'm kind of going to echo the same point. I support the recommended funding levels, but I, and I certainly understand the idea of supporting organizations and events that are longstanding in our community and have a record of bringing tourists to our community. But as we expand our funding in this category, as we get more hotels in, I hope we can think about adding some new events and new vendors to this list going forward.
Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you. Yeah, I will also support moving this forward, but I was wondering if I could get some brief information about the projects that were not funded and the key factors that the committee decided of why those specifically would not receive funding this year from the committee?
Again, the, all the applications are in your packet tonight. If you'd like more information, I'm certainly happy to pull some out for you, but I will also defer to Deputy Mayor, if you have any comments as one of the LTAC committee members.
Yes, I do believe the North American Fashion Week, there were some questions about external funding and getting external grants before we would be able to move forward with that. We do like the idea, it was just the limited amount of time, limited knowledge, and attempt to get future granting, grant funding for some of the other local profit organizations that might want to be involved, especially commercial partners, that wasn't there. And for the multicultural festival, they didn't necessarily have a date. I'll take some fault because I meant to reach out to Mr. Herzog about following up about dates that might be available throughout the calendar year, and I think that'd be important for additional projects, as with move forward with LTAC. When are we, when are we open for additional hotels? Like, is there a season where we don't have a lot of booking? And that's something we'll need to follow up with that multicultural festival on, because they were like, when can we throw it during the year where it might be important? So that was one of the, those are the two, two reasons they weren't funded, is there wasn't a date for one, and the other, we needed additional grant funding to actually move it forward.
Councilmember Owens?
Thank you. So I was online watching this, and as the person that is the liaison to the chamber, I really, really care deeply about these grants. I'm supporting it this year, and I just want to say a couple of things. Number one, Adam Acampora at Woodinville Wine Country, he had a $30,000 ask for tourism visioning and destination development. I think this actually, I was fully in support of not funding that, but I think that he raises a bigger question. What are we using these funds for, and how are we proving that it's bringing tourism? And I know every single year, I question the visitor center. That is here, people are visiting that because they're already here, it's not bringing them here. So there's just some, I think, criteria that we need to get around this. I have spoken at length with the Empowering for the North America Fashion Week and Northwest Share for the Multicultural Festival, and so we'll see if we can repackage those in a different way for following years. I know the Woodinville Arts Alliance especially is highly interested in both of those, as they see it would be hugely beneficial to their constituency and to pulling people in. But I, but I realize, you know, the $45,000, it's a big ask, it's an entire week event. There are hundreds and hundreds of people that would be staying for seven or more days here, so it is a really great event potentially to bring here. They have a long track record of success. The Multicultural Festival has been held at many cities around our area, and it typically brings in 5,000 to 10,000 people. So there are also some infrastructure things that we might need to sort through and figure out and come up with that story. So there's more work to be done there. I've also talked to them about going to the Port of Seattle, but this comes back to our economic development plan and what is our plan to really, so we're not in the, in the meeting just going with the same old, same old, but we're saying, what is it that we really are driving here? And maybe it is the same old, same old, because they're really proven, but if we don't have clear measures and clear success metrics, it's really hard to say, yes, this is bringing people in, or no, it's not. And I know one of Adam's clear asks is, can we get together more than once a year? Can we get together quarterly? Can we get together twice a year and take a look at where we are, what has changed? What are we seeing? What kind of metrics are we doing? Like, I think that this is something that we should be asking for when we're putting forth this kind of money towards events in our jurisdiction, so.
Councilmember Beth Campbell?
Still, this is a question that's been asked for a lot of years, but the metrics around how much money is brought in, so what we have donated to the program and what has come back in terms of tourism dollars spent at local businesses. Now, there's, I think that needs to be broken out into the people who are vendors at these different events, but also perhaps businesses that weren't part of the event. I'd like to see what the actual financial impact is, because when we give away $195,000, are we getting $400,000 in terms of revenue back? Or are we, are we subsidizing something that maybe isn't helping businesses in the way that we think we are? So we've asked questions before, how much do vendors make profit-wise at the events? They, historically, the wine has been incredibly affordable, which really eats into the profits for businesses. So I'm fine with all these things that we've been, that we've been giving money to, but I would like to have a metric as to what value have we provided? How beneficial is this, and how could we be more beneficial to businesses? Are they making money? Are we bringing money back into the city? Or is it just the event itself, which is fine? But if we are intending tourism, the thing with tourism is that you want the tourism dollars to go with it. So I would like to see, I know that Wine Country does data-driven engagement, I would like to get some information back as to what are we, what benefit, other than the event itself, are we providing to businesses? So it's, obviously, that's not going to happen tonight, but it is something that I think in, in future LTAC meetings, I think it would be very important and prudent to see where this money goes, how it was spent, and what, what was our return on that investment?
Anybody else? Seeing none, can we take a vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Back to the public hearing, mid-biennial budget review, Mr. Fritz?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, would you like to open the public hearing to start?
Yes.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Public hearing is open. Anybody wish to speak? We're going to have the, okay, we're going to have the presentation.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'm thankful that I wasn't the topic right after Ash's, because I didn't clear the room. It was Alex that cleared the room this time. So there's a blessing there, thank you. So I have a presentation for you this evening on our mid-biennium review. This is the kickoff to that process. It starts with a review of revenues and a revised forecast for those revenues, so let's, let's get at it. So just as a, by way of background, by statute, we're required to do a mid-biennium budget review. We'd do one anyway, but statute says it cannot begin before September 1st, and it cannot take any longer than December 31st. If we do decide through this process that we need to modify our budget, or assuming we want to levy property taxes for 2026, which we do, we must hold public hearings for those actions and adopt appropriate ordinances for those actions as part of this process. So as I go through the process of forecasting revenues, I dive, do a deep dive into economic information, I look at multiple sources during that period of time, I try to find sources that are timely, and it sometimes can be challenging, because in this particular market, two months makes a big difference on what the forecast is, because there's so many changing metrics going on. But some of the big highlights of the economic condition is, for example, the labor market has been cooling longer than what was originally thought, as evidenced by the annualized adjustment to labor numbers by over $900,000, or 900,000 jobs in that year. The Fed is meeting today and tomorrow with an expectation of a 25 to 50 basis point rate reduction, depending on which economist you talk to. Tariff impacts are predicted, but not yet in the economic data, largely due to businesses building inventory or front-loading in anticipation of future higher inventory costs. So all of, all of those factors are going into what I adjust forecasts for. Some additional factors is economists are now predicting a modest GDP growth through 2026 that's below 2%. And some of the more regional economists are saying sales tax growth is, I'm getting different answers. So like the Puget Sound regional forecast that I reviewed for 2025, 2026, around 6% sales tax growth, yet King County's forecast is 1% in '25 and 10% growth in '26. Now, admittedly, King County's forecast is a couple of months old. They didn't, normally, they produce an August report, and it hasn't been published yet. The Puget Sound Economic Forecaster says, overall, the region's outlook is still uncertain, with interest rates high compared to a year ago, labor market characterized by slower job growth and layoffs, and housing activity showing volatility. The effects of tariffs on inflation and borrowing costs add to those challenges and highlights the need to make sure we monitor these metrics moving forward. And the Puget Sound Economic Forecaster focuses on providing a Puget Sound regionally-focused forecast as opposed to national or state.
Mr. Fritz, what, is there anything that's mentioned with the variation in the King County forecast? Because that's a, that's a big delta between those.
Yeah, well, but the, some of the economic indicators have changed over that one quarter of data. So, you know, up until a couple of months ago, we were thinking that job growth was great, right? And that's changed, and so that's going to have an impact on, on what we see is going to happen with sales tax growth and so on. So I'm not certain why King County had such a huge swing between 2025 and 2026, but that was their quarter-two prediction. So these are five of the sources that I reviewed as part of my process in, in preparing for my forecasting efforts and available for you to access and review yourselves at your leisure. So now, let's take a minute and dive in a little bit into the background behind the revenues that the city receives. We used funds, the general fund, the street maintenance fund, and so on, as a mechanism to account for money that comes in that's, that's restricted for specific purposes. So a very general fund is the general fund, go figure, it's named for what it's, aptly named. Sales and property tax and various other taxes and a smidgen of fees make up the vast revenues for the general fund, and those can be used for very broad purposes. The Street Maintenance Fund gets revenues from the general fund, because it doesn't have enough revenues to support itself, but it also receives money from state shared revenues, part of the fuel tax and the multimodal tax revenues. And those are restricted specifically to street and road activities. Development Services Fund is made up of permitting and service charge fees for that particular activity. Park and Rec Special Revenue Fund is primarily the field rental revenues coming in and then subsidized by the general fund. Admissions tax is exactly what it sounds like. It's tax generated from activity within businesses, businesses within the, our borders that charge an admission for entry, and that's a 5% tax. Traffic impact fees, park impact fees, those are all fees-related and are highly restricted in their use. The Hotel Motel Fund is the, is synonymous with what you just voted on in your last item, that's the, the LTAC dollars, it's generated from this, the transient rental tax or, or hotel motel tax revenues. Real estate excise tax, one and two, that has statutory restrictions on it as well. It's a CIP revenue stream for the city. It has some uses outside of CIP that are allowable by law, but we historically don't use those in that capacity. Surface water management, it's a fee-based revenue source, and it comes through the property tax assessment. And then the other capital improvement revenues include grants and so on. So there's a variety of different revenue streams, and we're going to first dive into operating revenues. This pie chart gives you a picture of all the operating revenues across all of the operating funds that we just talked about. Sales tax is 31% of that entire revenue stream. Property tax and utility tax makes up 20%, so 51% of our revenue comes from those three sources for our, our general operating purposes. Development services and surface water management fees, those are revenues, again, that are derived through fees and charges for services, and they're restricted to those uses, so we can't let those blend into our other, our other activities. We're making a healthy bit of revenue through investment earnings over the last couple of years, which is nice to see, 9% in the pie chart for 2024. And then the last 15% is grants and other smaller operating revenues. Sales tax being our most significant source of revenue is one that I spend a significant time on in the forecasting process. This trend line shows you the history of our sales tax revenues since the city was incorporated. You can see here the drastic impacts that the Great Recession, in combination with the city transitioning from an origin-based sales tax system to a destination-based sales tax system had on, on our city when that happened. It took us from 2008 to 2019 to recover from those two events, from a revenue pers-. from a revenue perspective. But sales tax has been steadily growing since 2014. And you can see here that I'm forecasting a steep drop in 2026. That steep drop is from sales tax from construction revenue. And we currently isolate that particular sales tax revenue to CIP activity because it's highly volatile, right, and has peaks and valleys. If this trend line excluded those revenues, it would still be on an upward slope, albeit '25 and '26 would be fairly flat. So the revenue forecast for sales tax is being revised at this point very nominally for operating revenues. It's a $75,000 reduction in 2025, and the revenue forecast for 2026 remains the same. Let's see, moving on to property tax. This is one of our more stable revenue sources. You can see that, well, first of all, the city has historically has not increased property taxes year over year. So the council has the authority through a councilman act action within certain limitations to do a 1% increase on property tax year over year without the vote of the people. The last time we did that was in 2017, and we also did it in 2015. And then the next time that we had done it was 2006. And you notice that from the Great Recession through roughly 2016, there was very little change in the property tax trend line there. It was pretty flat, and that's because there was very little development. And so the revenue increases that you see from 2016 on are a result of new assessed value brought in within city limits due to development activity and property improvements. It's not due to a property tax increase. The revenue forecast for property taxes is going to change slightly. It's not built into the numbers that were in the staff report or in this presentation because I just received an update from King County today. But we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of a $45,000 increase to property tax revenue for 2026 due to new valuations. Utility tax revenue. This revenue was originally created to help cover the cost of a particular CIP project, CIP project, yeah, capital improvement project. And then it morphed into a revenue source that would remain but be dedicated to CIP activity. And then, I think around 2015, we decided as a city to swap that, and we took sales tax from construction, dedicated that to CIP because it's volatile, and we took the stable revenue source and, and put that into operating revenue. So from 2015 on, it's been used as an operating revenue. It's been fairly flat with slight declines. Most of those declines were in telephone tax revenues. Up until the last three years, telephone tax revenues have started to level out. They're not climbing, but they're, they're maintaining. And then we're seeing increases in electric, natural gas, and solid waste utility tax revenues. I attribute those to two factors, rate increases and population growth. My revenue forecast for this biennium actually increases by another $250,000 for this revenue source. So a significant increase for that, that revenue source. Other notable operating revenue adjustments. The fines section in the category in the general fund is going to decrease by $438,000. That's mainly due to a change in the timing of the school zone speed, school zone speed enforcement camera project. So the budget estimated that those cameras would be in place now, this fall. And it looks like it's going to be early 2026 before that's going to be feasible for a variety of reasons. And another change to the forecast is investment earnings. We're increasing the investment earnings forecast for the, for operating, all operating funds by $640,000. And finally, Development Services fee revenue is going to be decreasing by $400,000. That's based on our current understanding of development schedules. So in summary, for operating revenues, overall, it nets out to be a $151,000 increase compared to the original budget and revenues. Now, again, I just told you earlier that property tax numbers just came in, so that number's more likely going to be around $200,000 when we talk again in October. And I'll be updating these revenues as new information comes in up until the moment that we pass any kind of budget amendments. Overall, that's from improved investment returns, stronger utility tax, and the reduction in the fines, non-traffic infraction penalty revenues. It nets out to be around that $151,000. So fairly nominal on the operating side, which is good. Capital Improvement Project revenue forecasts. These, all of these revenue sources tend to be very volatile, have huge peaks and valleys. And you can see here park impact fees and even traffic impact fees are the most significant, significantly volatile revenues. They are so much so, I'll remind counsel, that we have a practice to not plan to use any of the money that we're anticipating coming in in the current biennium until we've actually received it, right? And so with the park impact fees, we are changing the forecast for an increase of $400,000 in revenues, so that's a good thing there. And traffic impact fees were actually, we have a drastic change in, in our estimates for traffic impact fees. And that goes from three, excuse me, it's a decrease of $3.7 million from 4.3 million dollars down to $600,000 for the biennium. That has to do with timing of projects, a revision in how we calculate credits that have been provided for system improvements and so on. But because of the way we budget and allocate funds, there's no impact on our current CIP projects because we weren't planning on spending any of that money until we saw it. So there's the silver lining there. Real Estate Excise Tax has been going gangbusters. You can see that 2022 and 2025 are record years. We just had a huge commercial retail sale that generated a significant amount of money for this fund. This fund has been forecasted to, it's being increased from $3.1 million to $4.5 million. That's a $1.4 million increase of additional revenues that we have reasonable certainty that we can, we are going to receive them. We can incorporate that into our current CIP plan and utilize those funds. So that's good news. And then sales tax from construction has been doing really well in 2025, much better than we anticipated. We expect that to increase. I'm doing this one from memory now because I didn't write that down in my notes, but I believe it's around $600,000, a little over $600,000 for 2025. And the forecast stays the same for 2026. And again, in this trend line, it kind of highlights why that first sales tax trend line dropped off in 2026 is because we are anticipating a huge drop in sales tax from construction revenue in 2026 and should see that pick up again when a couple of the other projects start up again. Overall, the net decrease to CIP revenues is $1.145 million. And that's reduced traffic and school impact fees due to timing of development. Strong REIT revenues mitigate those downward adjustments to the impact fees. And strong sales tax from construction does that as well. Also, there's roughly $270,000 from investment earnings that helped to mitigate, increase to investment earnings that are dedicated to CIP that helped to mitigate that decrease in traffic and school impact fee revenue. So overall, not too bad. And our budgeting, our way of handling the budgeting helped to mitigate our risk, so we're in good shape there. Next steps. In October, the city manager will bring to you the recommended budget amendments. Will bring to you a review of the overall impact of those amendments. So it's taking into account the changes that we're making in our sources and the changes that we're making in our uses or expenditures and what it all maths out like, are we balancing our budget? And we'll bring to you, this is a little earlier than normal, but given the council's current schedule, it makes the most sense. We'll bring to you first reading of the property tax levy, which would not include, at this stage, unless council directed otherwise, a 1% increase. So no property tax increase is anticipated for the first reading. And then, I believe I have, is the motion next. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Fritz? Seeing none?
I move to continue with the public hearing on the 2025, 2026 Woodinville City Mid-Biennial Budget Review, including revenue sources and any possible property tax increase as part of the biennial budget review to October 21st, 2025 in the Woodinville City Hall Council Chambers at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as may be heard.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, down, first reading of ordinance number 784 updating the critical areas regulations. Mr. Grumbaugh.
All right, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Let me go ahead and bring my presentation up. All right, as mentioned, this is a first reading of ordinance 784 regarding critical areas regulations updates that we're working on. Just some quick reminder, GMA cities, which Woodinville is one of, are required to designate and adopt critical areas regulations using best available science. And when we talk about critical areas, we're talking about wetlands, critical awkward for recharge areas, frequently flooded areas, geological hazard areas, and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. And I will note, I'm not going to go into all of this stuff because we went through a lot of this back in March. Kind of my goal tonight with you is just to focus on what has changed since when we had that study session back in March with you. So a couple of pieces here, also as part of reminder, Chapter 2151, which is what we're looking at right now, applies to critical areas outside our shoreline jurisdiction. Chapter 2177 is our critical areas that are inside the shoreline jurisdictions. And what that basically means is Little Bear Creek and the Snohamish River are not subject to these changes. It's basically all of our other streams outside of the shoreline areas that'll be subject to this. The other couple of things I want to note real quick, too, is when we were working on this update, we wanted to try to create some consistency because when we did the adoption of 2177, there were some major changes that took place at that time. So we wanted to try to sync up 2151 and 2177 to the extent possible as we were working through this. And then finally, as part of this periodic, the city's been working on updating regulations consistent with the changes in state law, as well as the best available science. Or the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing. We forwarded a recommendation to the city council. That was that study session we had back in March. Following that, we had, we're bringing back a first reading of an ordinance, but then made a determination that it was best maybe to do a little bit more looking at the stream regulations. And so we placed that on hold, and the city hired a consultant to review the best available science, as I mentioned, particularly related to the stream regulations because we wanted to explore options. One of the things that had turned out to be very true, not just with Woodinville, but with pretty much everybody. In fact, I've had, I participated in quite a few meetings with other jurisdictions that have been going through the same angst about some of the recommendations that came out of Fish and Wildlife for some of these stream buffers, that almost everybody's finding the same thing is that what's been proposed out of it and what they've been recommending probably doesn't really work on the ground in most cities and stuff. So we're not alone in wanting to relook at this stuff. The same thing has been going on across the entire region and actually really across the state of people have been working on their critical areas regulations. So a couple of things real quick about streams. There's a couple of categories. The water type comes from the Department of Natural Resources. So we have what are called S streams, which are the shoreline rivers, Little Bear Creek and Snohamish River. We have F streams, which are fish-bearing streams. And then we have N streams, and those break down into two types. We have the type of streams that don't have fish but are running year-round. And then we also have those that just run partial or just seasonal. So NP is all year-round, and NS is for seasonal. And then, as I mentioned a moment ago, Fish and Wildlife had done this update to best available science, and they had identified some recommendations for repairing management areas that focused on, and I won't go through that list there, you can see it there, and we had talked about it before. And as I mentioned, the Planning Commission's original recommendation in the study session we talked about did incorporate Fish and Wildlife recommendations. In particular, it was the site potential tree height as a method for determining the buffers was one of the things that was in that original recommendation. This has been the thing that's been creating a lot of angst for everybody. The one jurisdiction that I know that did adopt it has had all kinds of problems trying to implement it because it just has a lot of inconsistencies and it creates a lot of confusion. And more importantly, it also increased buffers by 50 to 70 feet and didn't really incorporate any concepts that, or any things that could potentially mitigate that you have like in a lot of your urban environments. So a little bit more detail on the urban stream, our repairing areas or streams that we're talking about. They're broken down into the channel migration zone, which is basically the area where the water moves in and around. In Woodinville, for the most part, all of ours are pretty much, our streams are kind of limited to very narrow active channels. We don't necessarily have a meandering as much here as like in some other areas. Like you kind of saw earlier down there in the city of Issaquah, where they showed that stream, how it really meandered around. Most of ours are pretty well more defined. Stream buffers, which is the current term, we have, so we'll have the water area. And then you have going upstream from that. Currently, we refer to them as stream buffers, but in the new terminology, they're referred to as repairing management zone designations. And basically, this is from the edge of the water, and then it's measured going up land, and then it can break down into some different pieces, both in terms of, you've got the repairing zone itself, which is more like where the soil's moist, and then you get into more of a zone of influence, which is really getting more into where it's more woody debris that is having an effect on the ecological functions of the stream. And again, as I mentioned, oh, so as I mentioned, we went and decided to do some supplemental review on best available science pertaining to streams. And this is basically having a shift then from this emphasis of SPTH. We took a look at options, and one of the things that kind of got noted as we were looking at other ways to look at the science is that Woodinville's highly developed urban setting in primary form of development being redevelopment rather than development, doing something like the SPTH, besides being very difficult to manage, basically would just be locking in a status quo, which really isn't helping the ultimate goal, which is trying to improve repairing and function, or basically trying to improve those streams. trying to improve repairing and function, or basically trying to improve those streams for fish and wildlife habitat down there. So, we saw a lot of issues with the approach, and we thought there would be a better way to do it, and so, what has been proposed is that we're not going to use the site potential tree height. Instead, there is an established fixed 200-foot wide standard repairing management zone, or referred to as a buffer for the F-streams, but that you can reduce this down to 150 feet if, in that 150 feet, you improve the, that buffer area to meet certain requirements, which are based on similar kinds of requirements that apply to wetlands. So we know that these standards do work, because they've worked with wetlands, they'll work with the streams. So that's one thing that's being recommended, and that's not much different than what we currently have for the F-streams, because currently, F-streams have a 140-foot buffer, so we're only looking at increasing these just a little bit. But then for N-streams, this is a little bit more of a dramatic change, this would be, all the N-streams would have 100-foot minimum repairing management zones or buffers, with no buffer reduction, and this is based on the science that basically talks about that you need at least 100 feet basically for pollution control, so that's where that 100 feet comes from. There really is no, if you want to try to get into more exceptions, which, like I know, for example, the city of Snamish really looked at their stormwater regulations as a way to potentially do less than that, but they have extremely robust, well beyond what is really required under our permit, so we didn't think we could really necessarily go that way, so that's why they recommended 100-foot standard for the N-streams, because that will meet best available science requirements. Now, we did also incorporate some flexibility, including an ability to do buffer averaging on the, which is a concept that is done with wetlands. The main points I want to just emphasize on this with the buffer averaging, is that you can't reduce the overall area of the repairing management zone, so the overall area of the buffer, the square footage of it, can't be reduced through buffer averaging, but what basically, and you can't reduce any part of it by more than 25%, but basically what you're doing is that you may be able to reduce up to 25%, but then you would increase it in other areas so that the overall average still comes out, at least to be the same as if you weren't doing buffer averaging. So, very important concept to be incorporated in this to let it kind of pass the best available science sniff test. And then also, a couple of other things that we've included in here, while we have these buffers, there are times where you may, where the director may need to require greater buffers than what the code requires. This tends to happen, like if somebody's doing a very intensive development, and they're doing it right up against the edge of the buffer, or would normally be the buffer, but they're not doing any mitigation measures to account for, trying to account for the impacts that that development might be having. So if that occurs, you might see a requirement for increased buffers. More frequently, though, or more often, if it's going to happen, it'll be because you've got like a steep slope or landslide hazard, and you'll need to really essentially have bigger buffers to help protect, because the landslide hazard has potentials for having negative impacts, and you may need to incorporate bigger buffers that also address the landslide hazards as well. And then finally, I wanted to just note real quick for you, we did circulate the latest draft to Fish and Wildlife, we also did circulate it with other groups as well, and we got comments back from Fish and Wildlife. I won't go through all the detail, a lot of that is in the staff report, if you have questions and stuff on it. For the things that we thought made sense, we incorporated those, a couple of them are just mostly like informational, a couple of other things we do think actually helped improve some of it, and then there were several recommends, or comments that we got back from them that we didn't agree with, or we didn't really think was, either was a little bit too confusing, or really wasn't accomplishing what we were trying to do, or was going beyond what we felt that we needed to do with the best available science, and so, as I mentioned, those were kind of highlighted in the staff report. So, we incorporated those changes, Planning Commission held another public hearing back in July, and then forwarded a revised recommendation, which is now basically what makes up the ordinance that's in front of you tonight. I do want to note that the deadline for adopting this was back in December, however, the Growth Management Act does also allow a one-year extension, which is what everybody else is working on right now, so there is a deadline to complete this by the end of this year. We're hoping to complete it a little bit before that, but I will also note, because we want to give developers and property owners a chance to adjust to these changes, because this is the first time we've done these changes in almost 10 years, the ordinance does propose an effective date for January 1st, so adoption of this, potentially over the next couple of meetings, we'll complete what we need to do with this, and complete what we need to do with the state, but we are recommending an effective date, actually not to start until the beginning of the new year.
Councilmember Evans has a question.
Great, thank you, and thank you for summarizing all these changes. The last time that we were talking about this in council, I know we had some businesses that were coming in with some significant concerns. I believe it was WM with their recycling area, and there was one other. Do we know, have we reached out specifically to them about these changes, because it seems like it addresses a lot of what they were talking about?
Yeah, I mean, everybody that has applications in here, we've done direct communications and reach out to them. In the case of the recycling folks, they were working to get an urban stream designation completed, which they were able to get completed, I think we issued that decision maybe a month or two ago, so they were able to get that completed, and one of the things that is included, one of the things Fish and Wildlife wanted us to take out, but wasn't part of our recommendation to do, was an ability to best for those urban stream designations that have been approved and projects have developed under those, there is a vesting provision in there, so they're in pretty good shape, plus there was also some other components in here, in this new critical areas regulations, that they could have also potentially benefited from as well. We didn't have to go down that, or explore that with them, because they got the urban stream designation, but they got taken care of through that, and then, I think it was Saint Michel's has also talked to us, and there's a vesting piece that they're being able to take advantage of, and the same thing has also happened with Green Partners as well. They have a current urban stream approval, they're making some modifications to it, but they also potentially have a vesting provision that will also help them out as well.
Okay, so they've been made aware. My second question was about, how are we going to ensure the 80% native plant coverage? Is there like a list of native plants, or is there, like, how are we going to make sure that that actually happens? Because when I went to the Pollinator Fest that was at 21 Acres, I know even the native plants people said it can be really difficult to fully plant just native plants, because you need some other infills, since things have evolved over time, so I was just wondering how we got to that 80% number and how that would be enforced?
Yeah, well, as I mentioned, the 80% number is actually something that's been established for wetlands, and so it's a standard that is accepted as, it's something that's been accepted by Fish and Wildlife and state agencies as being adequate in terms of supporting the ecological functions of the stream. How we go about ensuring it, so this is kind of how the permitting process works, the applicants will have to hire a biologist, a professional that has expertise in whether it's wetlands or streams, and in creating these kind of mitigation plans, and what happens is that they will put a plan together, that plan then, and it'll include a planning plan, and it'll include mitigation measures, like if there's impervious surfaces, all the different things that they're going to do to bring the buffer up to these performance standards. That then is reviewed, we have a third-party consultant that the city uses in reviewing those, because most of the planning staff were not necessarily trained or experts in the particulars of environmental biology and stuff like that, so we have a consultant contracted with that helps us peer review these plans, and then that consultant helps us make sure that those plans are meeting those standards that are, that they need to meet, and are providing a plan that we believe will work. After that, then, there's usually also a monitoring program that goes along with that, and it's within that monitoring program, there are performance standards about how many of the plants need to survive over certain periods of time, and if they don't, then they have to replant those plants, and so we have a monitoring and reporting that comes in, and we have a bond in place to make sure that, if for some reason the applicant suddenly disappears on us, we've got a bond in place that we can actually then use to move against, to then get those, that mitigation in those plants put in there. So, it's a combination of peer reviewing, the applicant provides the plan, we peer review it to verify, and then once that's approved, there is a monitoring plan and reporting that goes on for up to five years, to make sure everything is established in the way it's supposed to.
Councilmember Best Kemble.
So, I have a question about how this is going to apply to, there was talk of like a mobile dog park, and I know that we looked at Wooden Creek Park as a potential location, but its proximity to the stream was concerning, and unfortunately, when we did talk about the dog park, I was sitting in a hospital because my dad had open-heart surgery, so I'm sorry for missing that meeting, but are these new measurements in terms of distance and stream buffers, is that going to significantly impact the sighting location for this particular dog park, or are we within the parameters that we had expected before Fish and Wildlife came back to you?
Yeah, so I don't really know what the details are on the dog park, I know we've had some conversations about it before, but we're talking about along in our parks, along in here, those buffers are, those are not changing with this code update, those are shoreline, they have 100, well, actually, they're actually very similar, because of their S-streams, they have a 150-foot buffer that can be reduced down to 100 feet with mitigation, those aren't being changed through this ordinance, so those would be dealt with separately under the shoreline rules and stuff, those dog parks in the parks.
Along this waterway, but in other parts of the city, is that going to significantly impact where we could cite it?
It could potentially, yeah, I mean, it depends, because if you have waste material, you need to be keeping that out of the streams, which you need to be doing anyway, through our stormwater regulations, it's not just critical areas regulations that have those requirements, so anything that could potentially create listed discharges in there is going to have to be addressed regardless, so, yes, it could have an impact, but those impacts are already, actually, we have other rules that also impact the same thing as well.
Dog park, I think Wooden Creek Park creates some other challenges, too, not only the streams, but there's just inadequate parking there, so I think, I think we should probably look at Long East Rail, where we own a lot of property, where we have potential to have significant parking, where it's close to home or pet, and other features more central, so. Any other questions?
I move to pass the first reading of ordinance number 784, amending critical area regulations in chapter 21.51 in Woodinville, and this code as presented.
Second.
I have a motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries, thank you very much. That brings us to public comments. Nobody signed up? Okay, report, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, just a fun item this evening, that our tunnel pieces for our 133 roundabout are expected to be delivered, the bottom half next Thursday, and then, if all goes according to plan, actually ahead of schedule, the top half of that tunnel coming the following Monday, so within the next week and a half, we should have a tunnel there.
How many, how many pieces is that?
A bunch, I don't remember off the top of my head, how many?
Scientific, thank you.
We have engineers for that.
So we get a bunch of bottom and a bunch of top, okay. Okay, reports, council members, Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, just one quick thing, myself and two other council members have been tagged in a change.org request to implement a parking permit zone for residents, I am guessing that it's somebody who lives around here, because they've seen a significant reduction in parking, but I'm really trying to connect with the resident, so I just wanted to ask the city to be on the lookout for this, because we've been publicly tagged in it, and I just want to understand where they live, understand more about the details of what they're looking for, but, I mean, even tonight, we all struggled with parking here, so it's understandable, I think it's just worth understanding a bit more about what that petition is trying to drive.
Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. Last week, we had the Sound Cities Association and Public Issue Committee meeting at Mercer Island, it was one of our few in-person meetings, so everyone got together, it was a great meeting, and there's a few things I think I would highlight here, they talked about preparing their legislative agenda for this upcoming year, they're going to be changing it up a little bit this year and adding a county portion, especially with the administrative change happening at the county level, they want to focus a lot more at the county, where that organization can have an impact, and I think that's going to be great for cities like Woodinville, where we can work together with other cities to work on county-wide issues. And the second one was, our presentation at that meeting was the King County Public Library System, they were talking about a potential levy lift that they may be bringing forward, I believe they're going to come talk here at some point, too, but that was interesting, because they actually named Woodinville by name during their presentation because of where our library is located, if they do receive additional fundings, they're talking about maybe coming up with projects that could help the downtown area, since it's far away from the library in our area, and things of that nature, so if they do move forward the levy lift, I think there's possibilities for Woodinville to collaborate on how that can benefit our area as well, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Nothing for tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Best Kemble.
So, driving home a couple nights ago, Woodinville Devolver Road has some more lights out again, so that's basically from the heated storage all the way up halfway to Tanglin Ridge, we're getting to the dark part of the year, and I know we just had the whole southern, western portion of that road that was dark, and now it seems to be moving up the hill, so I'm sure that you're on top of it, because now we know, but just, I would be remiss if I didn't say anything. Second, there was a gigantic bear in my backyard that tried to get my chickens, and I imagine that there are a lot of other yards that had the same issue, don't approach the bear, let's be smart, but they usually eat blackberries, turns out they really like chickens, and they actually can pull doors open, so be careful with that. And on a functional note, I've not had email access since September 8th, so any emails that have been coming in, I'm not ignoring them, it's that my computer is a brick that overheats and doesn't connect to the internet, so carrier pigeon would probably be preferable to that machine right now, thank you.
Councilmember Art.
Nothing to report this evening.
Councilmember Taylor.
Nothing to report.
So, I had an opportunity last week to meet with three new chief, fire chief candidates, Chief Lane is retiring at the end of the year, and Chief Lane, I've got an opportunity to work with him very closely, and he's done a great job, I want to wish him well into retirement, well-earned retirement, he's been in the fires, working the fire service for a long time, he's been a longtime Woodinville firefighter and chief of Eastside Fire and Rescue. We interviewed three candidates, two external and one internal, and I'm happy to announce that Thursday, they hired Chief Aho, so he's going to work with the transition with Chief Lane through the rest of the year, and starting January 1, he will be the fire chief of Eastside Fire, so I hope that some point when his schedule allows that he comes out, and we can congratulate him and hear about his vision for leading our fire service into the future, and that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.